Twenty twenty. The May twenty third, twenty twenty three meeting of the Portsmouth School Board. Welcome everyone. We're happy to see so many students here tonight. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I, okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Patty, can you take the roll call, please?
Liz Barrett.
Here.
Hit clues.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Yeah.
Margot Peabody.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Hope Dan Epps. Brian French.
Here.
Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Danielle Miles.
Here.
Nick Dolan.
Here.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is announcements and recognitions. Do you want to go first?
Sure, just hand carry at your table. I apologize, we were going to link it in my memo, but it's the so list of the events around graduation week for class of twenty twenty three. So you have the listing of all those events and times. Connect with that, you know, if there are events you have questions about, you know, you could feel free to follow up with my office or Steve Cano see if that's.
Adding Lister graduation to this?
Uh, this is, again, this is P- PHS put it out, there is, the Lister date is second. Friday, June second.
Eleven, eleven, eleven A M. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And we hope to see everyone at that graduation and the Portsmouth High graduation. We traditionally get invitations to the high school. I don't believe we've gotten it yet, no.
But we will.
Yeah.
See what's happened. I'll see what's happening with this.
Okay, but it's fun to go to both of those.
Yes.
So if you can make it, that would be great. Okay, I would just like to have, I have a special presentation for our student rep, Nick. This is his last meeting. Nick, we want to thank you for being such a dedicated representative, student representative to our school board. You have been absolutely phenomenal. We've had many, many student reps and they've all been great. But in my opinion, you stand out. You have been so conscientious. You've given us good advice. You have just been a real stellar addition to this board, so we want to thank you and wish you the very, very, very best. And ask you to come back and let us know what you're up to.
Thank you so much.
What, what are your plans for the fall? Have you decided?
Well, yeah, I believe I'm going to be going to Tufts. We haven't quite worked out like a possible gap year program thing, but it's.
I prefer Medford, Mass, so I prefer Medford.
Smart enough to take it.
There you go.
Lisa, um, for announcements, I just want to give a shout out to our fine arts department. They did a phenomenal high school art show with three S. It was like, I think, the first time I've done that scale of senior show. They had stuff from students in all grades and all different classes, and they had extra work from all of our seniors. It was a really cool event. It was part of Portsmouth four hundred. So, yeah. That was really cool to see.
Liz, I guess I just want to follow up regarding Portsmouth four hundred, and I wondered, because our next meeting is not until, I believe, I guess, oh, let me see, the Portsmouth four hundred parade
Is the third.
Is the third, and we don't have another meeting, so that's what next week we're looking at. Um, and so I had emailed Margot and Nancy. I don't know that you guys responded. Um, but I kind of, I know that Nancy had mentioned she wanted the board to march. There hasn't really been much follow up as far as like what that's going to look like or how many board members are going to participate, but I threw out the idea, and I don't know if Zach can follow up on this, or I could, I'm happy to email Mr. Gagman about it, but he mentioned that he did secure a trolley. And so I guess I wondered with, you know, folks, you know, not having to walk the whole parade route if they didn't want to, and the, there might be extra seats on the trolley. And so I threw out the idea potentially having board members do that, and I guess I'm wondering, like, what would we sort of foresee, like, should I go create a sign? Like, what are we, what do we foresee this looking like? And I just wanted to sort of, if we could finalize some plans there.
Okay, we did talk about it in our last meeting.
Yeah, we did, but I don't think there's ever.
We have a big banner made, which is, which is made. So we have this huge nine-foot banner that says Portsmouth School Board.
Yeah.
And we're going to stand behind that banner. It has a wooden pole through it and, and board members and their families. And we got a pretty good response for people that were going to come. I think you were there. Um, we're all going to hold the banner and march down the street, and I requested that we be placed in front of the Portsmouth High School band.
Okay.
So I did get an email back from Bryn Sullivan, who's organizing the parade, and she said she'll do, she thinks she can accommodate us and have us march before the band. Now, what happens is I'm waiting to get an email from her about where we should all meet. It will be on one of the side streets off of Islington Street. Because they emptied those streets onto Islington, and that's how the parade proceeds down to Market Square. So I'm just waiting to get that email, so I'll send it to all of you. If you want more information about the parade, just go to the website and click on the parade, Portsmouthfourhundred.org. And Portsmouth, New Hampshire, fourhundred.org, and they, they have a lot of information about the parade. I didn't think it was necessary to give it to all of you unless you're interested in it, but it's going to be a big parade, it's going to be a huge celebration. So it will be fun for us to be part of it, I think. So I will get to you with all the information about where we should all meet.
And I guess I'd.
Is challenging, so you'll have to think about that yourself. Where do you want to park?
Like, I guess I'd, I'd like, I just want to be sure that the, it's accessible to all board members too, so, you know, if any board member feels like they cannot walk it or whatever, I, you know, it would be good to have alternative means of transport. All right, thanks.
That's what, we'll, we'll keep that in mind. If somebody feels they don't want to walk, I'm sure we can ride in that, that trolley. So let me know. Okay, yes, Carrie.
Um, just the team at New Franklin has been rocking it with lots of events that have come back since COVID, a kindergarten to first grade musical, which was incredible, and second and third, and then we also had a talent show recently. Um, but there's a lawn fet which is coming up on, is a lot of fun, and it's on June eighth at five P M, right in the midst of four thousand graduation activities.
June, June is always a frantic month. Okay, any other announcements that anyone has? I think we're all set. Okay. All right, now we will move on to the next item, which is acceptance of minutes. Um, I guess we've had a suggestion that we table this to our next meeting, so if that's okay with everyone, we're going to table the acceptance of the minutes to our next meeting. Okay, let's move on to public comment session. Is there any member of the public here that would like to speak before our board? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay, so we don't have to open up our public comment session. Okay, presentation. I believe we have Eileen here, but are you, do you want to introduce Eileen?
Well, I think we're going to have both Eileen and Christine Burke and students they've worked with in connection with looking at the YRBS, Usual Behavior Survey data. And I will let the board know in advance that the, the students are doing this, this is the first set of work that's being done on the data. Administration has yet to engage this information, so we're looking forward to doing that as well, and we're, and we're excited about having the opportunity to hear what students had to say. Christine, it's all you.
Christine, I'll start with you.
Um, yeah, I'm just going to do a quick reminder of where, what the Getting to Y program is. Back in November, when I came and talked about wellness initiatives in the district. This was one of the ones that we were hoping to get off the ground, and we wanted to try to make sure we could circle back with some feedback on the program, which, so we're really excited that we were able to do this. So we started in getting just the basic information about the Getting to Y. Uh, this is a program that actually initiated in the state of Vermont, and it is an evidence-based intervention strategy, which means there is research that's been done to prove its efficacy and actually positive outcomes around student behavior. It started in two thousand and eight, and over eighty Vermont middle and high school students have participated in the program. We are probably, to my recollection, in the first five to ten schools in New Hampshire to have taken this on, so that was pretty, that's pretty impressive. I also spoke back in November about the establishment of the Greater, Greater Youth Portsmouth Wellness Coalition. And this, this initiative is actually an outcome of that. It was an example of the, the collaboration across agencies where this program was actually funded by Pine Tree Institute, which is one of the organizations that's part of the coalition, and so, and it, and it actually was brought to our attention somehow through that coalition. I'm not even sure honestly how it got to our table, but I'm not sure without the coalition, we would have even been aware of this program to be able to have done it. So, so that's a good example from that. February eighth, we did our training of the trainers, and so out of the young ladies behind me, there are five of them here. Three of them came from the advanced statistics class at the high school and two are from our wellness club, first-year students from the wellness club. Um, and, and the goal for the program was really to empower students, to empower students to learn how to analyze the data and to have conversations among themselves, and so on April eighteenth, I think it was Eileen's maybe third day back or something from, we had the training of a bigger group of students. And if I, I can't give accolades enough to this group of students behind me, because they literally ran the training. I was on lunch duty. That was my job, was to make sure we had lunch. And it was, other two professionals, it was amazing. They just, they took it and they ran with it, and so what they want to share with you tonight is a little bit about what the training was like, and then we have two additional students here who were part of the training. They were not in the leadership group, and they want to talk to you a little bit about what their experience was like for the program. So, going to turn it over to them.
Can you come up to the microphone?
I want it from up here, babe.
Yeah, I think it's maybe very.
Are you the two?
We just need to be able to hear it.
Here, can you pull the, can you pull the mic back? I don't know if we can. Yeah, they're not going to hear you either. Here, you can, you can, you can grab it and pull it that way and see how long it extends. Here, that one goes a little further. There you go.
There you go.
All right.
I'm Sage Bucier. I'm a freshman and I'm a leader.
I'm Sienna Metcalf. I'm a freshman and I was a leader.
I'm Georgia Pinciaro. I'm a junior and I was a leader.
I'm Maddie Harholtz. I'm a junior and I was also a leader.
I'm Julian Richman, and I was a participant.
I'm Evy Douglas. I'm a junior and was a participant.
And I'm Ava Schlosser. I'm a junior and was a leader. The Getting to Y movement is a collaboration of the AP Statistics Class and Wellness Club at PHS. Students from each group signed up, I'm in both, for example, and went to a data retreat in February. There, we learned how to suggest solutions, how to teach other students what we had learned, and most importantly, how to actually analyze the data. After that, we were made the official student leaders, and we conducted a data, data analysis on April eighteenth.
And just so you guys know, it's because the meeting has to be public. It's not necessarily for a hearing. I'm not being weird. I swear. There was a reason.
She's being weird.
I'm being weird.
The first, the first, sorry, it, it is. The first step we took was creating an asset web with the group. This, the job of this was to introduce the strengths in our community that we found. To, in, in order to do this, we set out posters all over the room with many categories, including uh, categories, the categories we had were support, empowerment, boundaries and expectations, time use, commitment to learning, positive values, and social competencies. And we did this activity because it helped us look at the strengths that already existed in our community, and it helped, and also look at positives before looking at the data. After we, after we finished the asset web, we explained to the group what the history and the purpose of analyzing the results of the youth risk behavior survey is. And we also explained how to pick out the most important data, because we can't look at every single one. We then got to work analyzing, separating it into strong and weak concerns and strengths.
We looked at the data by breaking our large group into three separate categories. We had one group looking at questions surrounding the drug and alcohol usage, another group looking at mental health-based questions, and then our third group had like other life experiences and sexual and dating violence, and then we had them each pick their top three strengths that they found and the top three weaknesses, and we had them write them on this board that we can see here. So I'll have our two participants come up now and talk about their experience.
Yeah, so the leaders put out many different flyers around the school, and as an AP Statistics student, as an AP Statistics student, I was super interested in seeing what actually came of the survey that I had filled out. And so we arrived on the day and participated in many of the activities that they had talked about.
These activities allowed us to look at all the different data in the different three categories, and we were able to look at data that surprised us, data that we were, we thought would, was along with what we thought would be, and one of the points that was the most striking to us was that fifty-two point three percent of students at our school do not reach out for help for their mental health problems. So this is one of the issues that we were kind of most concerned about, and with our solutions, we'd like to help create a answer for. The day went on really well, and we did a couple more activities that are going to be discussed in a second, and we just wanted to thank Eileen and Chris for the day. It was awesome. Oh, yeah, okay, so here on the board, we picked out three of the top strengths, one from each of the group, and then three concerns, again, one from each group.
So starting off with strengths, because the data not only produced issues that we have within our community, but also good things that we can find throughout student response. One of the statistics, including sixty-nine percent of PHS students are called hearing, reading, or seeing public message about avoiding alcohol or other illegal drugs during the past twelve months. So this shows that Portsmouth does a good job of putting the message out there that these drugs are not okay to be using and educating our students on their negative effects. Another statistic is that the percent of students who tried to quit tobacco products in the last twelve months is forty-seven point eight percent. And this is positive because it shows that out of the percent of students using nicotine in our community, forty-seven, almost half of them are trying to quit within the last year. Um, and the last statistic in the strength category is that the number of students who feel like their friends would think that it was wrong for them to take a prescription drug that was not prescribed for them is eighty-three point nine percent. And this is strong because it shows that we have positive peer reinforcement in our community, and students don't accept other students using really harmful drugs, and we're enforcing as a student body, like, negative, or not using negative drugs. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the survey also did highlight some of the faults that we have, so like, we have forty-one point eight, or fifty-one point eight percent of students who texted, emailed, or emailed while operating a car or other vehicle within the past thirty days. It's extremely concerning, especially, that's only like a month of time. Then we have students who seriously considered suicide in the past twelve months, which was twenty-one point three percent, which is even more concerning when we look at our next point, which I know Julian brought up earlier. That was how students who never or rarely seek help is at fifty-three point two percent. So people who are feeling as though they need help still aren't seeking it, which is really concerning. So that's why we obviously need to fix these things, which is why we have these solutions.
Yeah, so what is all this without a solution? We're looking at like what's next with this process and what we can do about it. And we've talked about it as a team, and we've decided that one of the really important steps in this process is education and educating the community on what's going on and how we can better it, and how we can make a more comfortable community that can talk about these things and that can have a de-stigmatized conversation about mental health, which can start as early as in middle school or elementary school, having like age-appropriate conversations about mental health and how we can look at that in a more appropriate and inclusive setting, so that we can address it and feel comfortable talking about it in schools and feel comfortable talking about it as a whole and like in our community, so that people are not feeling the need to, or like, are feeling comfortable seeking help, so that statistic goes down, and so that people can actually feel more comfortable in our community.
Yeah, along with this, we want to, we, one of our ideas was to facilitate a viewing of The Anxious Nation, which is a documentary. We were hoping to do that in the fall. Just to begin that de-stigmatization, de-stigmatizing, along with hopefully getting some speakers into our school as well as the younger schools. Along with this, we were hoping to improve some of the connections and things that we have within our school. Improving upon the Mentor Mondays would be one of those things. That way, everyone has a person that they can do, go to to seek that help. We also think that improving how the help is presented, so students know exactly what is available, how to get it, and what will happen if they do seek out help. That would be very helpful, so that students don't have any fear around that. And, yeah, I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, so I think now we're opening the floor to questions, and we can answer like as a group.
Yeah.
Should we stay seated here, so?
Okay.
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. That was very, very, very interesting, and it's just wonderful that students have been so involved in this. We're involved students. It's nice that the students are coordinating and communicating and researching and doing all the work behind this. So we'll open it up to the board. Do we have any questions? Carrie?
I'm a data geek, and so I'm really excited that you are all data geeks as well. That is awesome. I was, and, and like, if this, if, if, if this isn't appropriate, you can just say no, but I was really I say that, I'm going to ask about sexual and dating violence, but, um, you know, like, I was just curious because I was really shocked by the data in that section, and I'm just curious what your discussion about it was. And what your thoughts are on it.
Yeah, we talked about it, and we, we discussed it and decided to like go with these three data points, just because we, like, as the Getting to Y process is like where you just pick three different topics to focus on, so that you can like really push those things within your school. But we had like a really important conversation about it and like talking about same things, kind of education, and like feeling okay to reach out. Um, I don't know, Maddie, do you have any thoughts on, or any of you guys actually? Like, what was our conversation like?
Can you come up to the microphone?
We were trying to have health education throughout all four years at the high school, instead of just the one year, which is sophomore year. That is the only mandatory class at the moment. And we think the education could be broadened a lot more, even if it is like a one-quarter class, just to keep you thinking about it instead of forgetting it.
Thank you.
Um, also, real quick, we wanted to mention that we talked about some of the ways that the questions were worded were, could have been interpreted differently, or were, or were a bit confusing. So if we do this every two years, we want to make sure that the questions are clear, so our data is accurate.
Yes. Oh, I, I thought you were going to say something. Okay, any other questions from board members? Liz?
Um, I, I guess, are we having any further conversation after this about this survey at all, or is this, is this my time to ask questions about the survey in general?
So as, as we were saying at the beginning, the, we included the full YRBS ju, based on the conversation with board leadership, so that you would see the raw information that students were trying to interpret. But administration has not yet done our full kind of dive into this, so I might not have a lot of answers for you around specific questions.
Okay, I do have a couple questions, so I guess, first, regarding what you guys have brought forward in your analysis, I think that's great, and thank you all for being here tonight. And, you know, in, in combining your time together with the Wellness Club as well. I guess I'm a little bit concerned, I guess, you know, when you say that sixty-nine percent is a good job, I think you're trying to find stuff to put in that category, right? But if we were to say, you know, out of all the kids that are smoking at Portsmouth High School, forty-seven point eight are thinking about quitting. I mean, have you, did you guys discuss the alternative that the other half are, haven't even contemplated quitting based on the question, you know, so it's, I feel like it could go both ways, right? You know, and sixty-nine percent being good for, uh, sixty-nine percent of, of, the slide's not up there, but that was for, remind me, that was for, uh,
Nicotine, um, use and trying to quit.
Yeah, that, that was the forty-seven.
Fifty-nine percent was the data, of hearing messages around substance.
Hearing messages, right? But you'd think that, you know, back in my day, we had the DARE program. It was like, everybody heard about DARE, right? So couldn't you say in the, in the alternative, forty percent not hearing this information maybe is not great, like maybe it should be ninety percent, right?
For sure.
So did you guys have conversations about that too? I mean, I think there is some concern even in that category, right?
Yeah, definitely. Um, but we also looked at it compared to other New Hampshire schools' data.
Okay, I was wondering what it was compared to.
So, yeah, comparing that shows, like, with those vast differences in statistics, it, it shows like a positive. Statistic for us.
Yeah.
We also were comparing it to surveys that we had, our school had taken in the past, and schools had taken in the past, so a lot of these were growth from twenty nineteen, which is why we might have put them in the category, yeah.
But obviously not off the table for being perfect. And so I guess my other question too is similar to Carrie's, and I, I know she brought up sexual dating violence, but I guess I was wondering about the survey, and is there information, when you're taking the survey, when somebody's spilling out the survey and it's saying, hey, I think one of the questions was something about sexual assault in either a relationship or a family member. Does it say on the survey itself, as you're contemplating this question, that like, maybe, like, this isn't, this isn't right, and therefore, you know, if you want to report, you can report to X, Y, Z at the school? Like, is that, is there anything on the survey that would offer that? And I, my follow-up question to that is, what time of day is this survey being offered? And I guess I'm concerned with children that are being triggered. You know, if you're having to contemplate being sexually assaulted and answering and contemplating your prior sexual assault, is this being offered before they have to go take a test in the afternoon? And, you know, what kind of wraparound services are being offered to kids after they are having to complete such a survey?
Okay, so first of all, the survey is voluntary, so they don't have to take it. So any student has the option to opt out of it. They, they're told that. They are also told that there may be information within it that is challenging and triggering, and that the counseling staff is available to them at any point if they want to connect the support, so. So we surround it that way. It is, this year it was given, it's always given during Block, Block Two, because that ensures that all grade levels are represented in the school, addressing the issues of seniors not necessarily being there at the beginning. And we actually did it on an early release day, so we, we used the least amount of academic time that we could. And so really, the survey took pretty much the whole block of, of second period. I actually proctored one of the exams, and I had eighteen students filling it out, and they got in, they did their thing, they submitted, they were done. So I'm not saying that, that students wouldn't be triggered, but for many of them, it was a routine kind of thing, answer the questions, and, and they can skip questions too.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a bit concerned, because I think there's, there is a, you know, we talk about what's, what sounds great, what sounds great. I mean, it doesn't sound great, but, you know, there's low percentages. You know, is twenty percent really low, though? You know what I'm saying? So if twenty percent, you know, it may just be clear with the, the data here, but I, I think there was a significant number of female students, you know, and male students too, that reported, you know, sexual assaults or, or sexual violence, and I guess I'm just concerned with triggering somebody and recalling that information and having to deal with that information, and then we're just saying, okay, go about your day. And, and also, at the same time, if you're saying you can opt out, but everybody has to take the test sitting there proctored together, I, I'm a little bit, and so I guess I'm wondering if there's any sort of, like, discussions or further conversation, or maybe within the group of students, if that concern came up with anybody, or the possibility of, of sort of what that could mean for a student that has dealt with it.
Liz, thank you. Let's move on. Lisa?
If I may, I just want to say this is a national survey that is taken in schools all over the country, and students and parents get a lot of advanced information about it. A lot of information on what topics will be covered, a lot of information on opportunities to go elsewhere in the building, so they're not just like having to sit in the corner if they want to be the one kid in the room not taking the test. There's a lot of advanced prep work. Because I think you raised good questions, but I think, you know, as a parent, being on the receiving end of the information, like, I had weeks of time ahead of time to talk to my student about it and ask them if they had any questions about it, and And, you know, it sounded like those conversations were happening in the high school both before and afterwards, so.
Yeah, I, I think the staff is really
People did a really good job of like pre-teaching what it was about, of sort of like debriefing afterwards.
And even the proctor students who aren't nec- and teachers who aren't necessarily counselors are given prep information about of what to do if a student has concern. So I think we put a safety net in place to the best of our ability. Does that mean we hit every target? Probably not. But I think that, and even the numbers when you're saying, well, sixty-nine doesn't seem like a great thing. We're trying to build on whatever positives we have. We're not saying that it's great that thirty percent of our students still don't know, hear messages, but at least we know that somebody's listening. And then where do we go from there? How do we build on that?
And I just wanna say, I love so much that you guys are making an effort to sort of link up that advanced mathematics with sort of real life things that are happening in your world right now. I mean, I think that's fantastic. I mean, I wonder if you guys as students see any other opportunities to do that based on your experience with this. Cause math is pretty boring when you're just sitting there crunching.
Yeah.
Like, that's cool when you can do this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely wanna, if nothing else, continue this program because we've seen a lot of success in it. What with our participants, um, we've got a lot of positive feedback. Um, so I'm not certain of any other programs, but this one is definitely a success and we wanna continue it in the future.
Thank you. Okay, I think Margot was next and then Brian.
Um, I will start with an accolade. We always give people ten minutes to present and you guys are the only ones that nailed it. So that is excellent modeling for the adults in our community. I'll leave it at that. Um, secondly, I really wanna dive into this um de-stigmatizing because it's something I feel passionate about when the suicide prevention group was presented to us, this, that NAMI group presented us this fall. I had asked how, I, I would, I would love an insider's view of how do we better do that? I, I know some of you and I know many of you have been here since kindergarten, so could we, are there cultural things? Are there systematic things that are blocking our ability to normalize the conversation? And then as the body of the school district that handles policy and budget, tell us where the fixes are. Where do we focus that? I'm, I'm well familiar, I, I left New Hampshire for a little bit and moved to New York and I will tell you, it is much more de-stigmatized there. So some of this is cultural and I would love us, particularly from those that have experienced it from the inside, where are the blocks? And, and how early does it start? And how do we make it normal, safe, everyday conversations? So I'd appreciate any advice and thoughts. You may not have the answers, but know that this is the body that can push policy, push budget, because it's something that absolutely is essential to success.
Yeah, um, we actually had a long conversation about that. We thought that having speakers coming in and talking about things that were like uh mental health related, obviously, um, starting at earlier ages would be something that would um have a big impact. Like my first, for example, my first conversation about that, like mental health, like anything, was in middle school. Eighth grade, I think. Um, and before that, it was never talked about in school. I had a guidance counselor, but I didn't really know that I could go to talk to them about like stress during a test or anything like that. Um, I don't know how that is now, but I think having those conversations starting in like third grade, obviously age appropriate, but in a more like inclusive and everybody's like welcome to talk about this and like in a way that actually like includes people and like, like informs them that they have guidance counselors who care about them and teachers who care about them in a community that like is there for them.
Definitely. And I think, that's a great question. It's like a very big question, but um even programs like this one um help kind of start the conversation. Uh, I had a lot of people ask me, uh, I, I mentioned I was presenting the school board. I, they asked me what I was presenting about. And they're like, oh, that survey? Yeah, what happened to that? So um, this kind of thing just really helps start the conversation in the community and just around the school, so.
Okay, I think we have Brian that has a question. Thank you, Margot.
Yeah, thank you for getting involved with this. This is excellent and great information. Um, I was curious what the, how many kids actually were a part of this survey? Yeah, who actually, who actually signed up, like numbers or percentages or?
That took the survey or participated in the training?
The survey.
Um, it was uh eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and ninety, somewhere just under nine hundred students.
That's like
Out of a thousand and seventy-eight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of kids. Sick ninety. And the other, the other thing, I mean, just, just a comment on here. One of the things that most disturbs me is just the number of kids who attempted suicide in the last twelve months. I mean, it, it's great, it's less than New Hampshire average, but six point seven percent, that's nearly sixty kids, you know, tried. So, and I know that a lot of work has been done around suicide prevention and talking about it and all this stuff, so. But it's, you know, uh, it's really disturbing to see the number right in front of your face.
Yeah, definitely. And I think as we're looking through like root causes of some of these numbers, it really, not all, but a lot of it came back to COVID, um unsurprisingly. But there was a huge, like, the mental he- mental health, everything was pretty drastic.
Yeah, and um this survey, you can see the date, I think it's twenty twenty-one on there. Um, so that's right after COVID, if not during. So um, we're hoping that once we get the statistics back from this year, that statistic will go down. Um, also, I think compared to statistics beforehand, it was, it went up, so.
Yeah.
Covid pandemic definitely increased that, which is
Pip?
Um, I want to echo everyone else's um appreciation and respect for you guys for partaking in this cause I think it's amazing work and it's so cool to see students doing it. I think we should all be doing it, but I'm really glad you, it's starting with you guys. Um, I guess my question is a little bit similar to Margot's, but a little broader, like um, in your opinions, what is sort of like the number one challenge with all of this? And, and, and if you know, is there anything that could, could change in the schools that would help support students?
Well, good question.
Um, I would say the reaching out for help, that was like a really strong statistic and that relates to all the other statistics that we found, or all the other statistics that we thought were really pressing. So, uh, like what was it, fifty-something percent peo- or people?
Can I ask a question about that specifically?
Yeah.
Do you know if, that the challenges that people don't know who to reach out to or is it the stigma that keeps them, do you know why people?
Definitely a combination.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to tell one or the other. I'm obviously Yeah, it's definitely a combination, but I would say more the stigma. Um, especially in our community, like um Margot pointed out, um in New York, obviously, like there's less stigma there. And I think that it's definitely a community thing, cause you can compare other c- communities who probably have the same resources. Like, we're a really lucky community to have like all these resources, but.
We sometimes wonder if we don't have enough resources, so I guess that's a related question. But it sounds like what you're saying is it's not so much that, it's more that people just don't feel comfortable to me.
Yeah, and that goes back to kind of just starting the conversation and getting the word out about things like this. Um, because really like at the root of it, the more you talk about it, the more you talk about it. So it kind of ta- breaks down that stigma.
Um, I just wanted to add, um, we were talking about it and we were trying to say like, who are we like supposed to go to? And a lot of things were brought up that we're supposed to go to like our guidance counselors, which a lot of us didn't realize that they were there for more than just like college and scheduling. Um, so I think just getting out like what resources exactly we do have is a lot, is gonna be a big thing. So I think in like, starting earlier, it's like freshman year, I know we started in the middle of COVID, so it was very hard. Um, but just getting those like resources, like knowing that they're out there, normalizing them to reduce the stigma and just making them available, knowing what's available exactly and like what's gonna happen. I think that could really help uh reduce any like fears and stigma and just like get a lot of people into like getting help if they know what's there specifically.
So question about, question about those fears and the stigma. Where, as you guys talk about it and talk to your peers, wh- where do you feel that, that pressure of the stigma comes from? Is it, is it parents? Is it your fellow classmates? Is it, where is like the real intensity of like, geez, I don't know that I wanna go reach out for help? Because I'm worried about how I'm gonna be perceived. Who are students most worried about being perceived in a negative way in connection to a mental health concern?
Um, like, after discussing in the groups, I was in the group that was talking about like other life factors and mental health and we discussed this. And a lot of people were saying their own like perfectionism and anxiety about not, about others looking that, on them for not being like strong enough to take care of their own, like, you know, not asking for help because they didn't wanna look weak, which they wouldn't. I'm not saying that, just like they thought they would. And peers, I mean, you're never gonna not, there's never gonna be a situation where nobody's judging you for anything that you're doing, good or bad. And in high school, that's exacerbated, like to an extreme level. So I would feel like in my conversations, those two were definitely the biggest.
I would completely agree.
Danielle, um, I just wanted to touch on, I, I am, first of all, enamored with the whole process. I, I think this is fantastic. I think we need to apply this more, right? I think the more we can have you guys take on these topics, dig deep and then tell us what to do. And I know that's a heavy ask, um, but I, I, I think it just generates this like ownership and this like you hear us, we're all asking you because we know you guys are so strong and so smart and you have so much information that we want to tap into. Um, I love the fact too that you included step four, like what's, like stop talking, let's do it.
Yeah.
Um, and so two of the things that I think I heard you call for was a showing of the documentary. And if we can apply that bigger, I love that idea. You guys love this. You guys tap into movies, right? And it speaks to you on a way that allows you to sort of separate away from, but then also connect to. Um, and I would love to hear what you think about tackling more topics around that premise of if we start with a documentary, which is founded on fact, hopefully, right? Um, and then that opens up for discussion. We, we love to talk about something that I can separate a little bit from. How would you see that working? Like, how could we do that in a way? Are, are you seeing it like as an opportunity, like a movie club thing? Are you seeing it integrated into curriculum? Or you see it um both? Like, or is there something else that we're not even considering?
Um, yeah, Ms. Burke, but Yeah, we were thinking, oh.
That was the other thing.
As far as the video goes, it's actually going to be a collaborative with Sea Coast Mental Health and um the Portsmouth Music Hall is going to help us promote it. And we're gonna host it at the high school because of um parking, et cetera, but it is gonna be a community-wide event and these guys are gonna be the sponsors of it, so they're gonna be promoting it and potentially sitting on a panel after it to talk about the impact of it, that type of thing. Yeah, and you can talk about
If I could just also follow up about that Mentor Monday, um, because I didn't know about that. Like, who's in, involved in that? How do you get involved with it? How do we find the mentors and can we require all kids to have a mentor?
So as of right now, we actually all do technically have a mentor, so every Monday we get all our flexes, which is our like homework block at the end of the day, assigned like a certain person. And as of now, I believe it's all alphabetical, so they just divide us into groups and we're all in a room. Um, so I think it's a really great premise for us to get to know a group of kids coming into high school, have a teacher and a person that we can go to. Um, however, it's just not executed very well at the moment, so. It's a really good idea. I think that we can like use it as a starting place to really do something with it. So I know for me personally, like, I only talk to one other person in my um flex group. I've never had a class with my teacher and oftentimes I don't end up going to that class because I'm working on other projects and stuff. So I feel like if we had a better way of having um planned activities, having one-on-one meetings with this mentor, just really actually creating relationships with the mentors, that people have a person to immediately go to, make connections so that they do have an easy option to seek help if that's what they need it for. Um, and really finding a true group to have like icebreakers, different games, to create a community, a small community at first for you to find your way at the high school. I think that we could make Mentor Mondays into like a really helpful resource for us. It's just at the moment not being utilized.
Yeah, I like how it's called Mentor Mondays, but I feel like it doesn't really fit the definition. Like, our teachers are not really our mentors. They're just, they're, they're always very kind, but they're like more telling us to flex in and then we go and do our homework like an everyday flex thing. And I love my advisor or mentor, but it's not like a relationship that I would like consider him as somebody that I would go to to like talk about something like mental health or something that we see on the survey. So I think that we could definitely make it into something where it's more of like a open space and more of like a, I don't know, like a way to connect better with our teachers and um create more healthy or stronger relationships with them.
Liz, um, you had mentioned that when you were talking to other students about coming here tonight, they were like, hey, what happened with that survey? So I assume that, you know, given the questions and sort of, you know, uh, I mean, some of them are pretty, you know, risque. They're kinda digging into their personal life. I would, I would think they're kind of personally invested at this point to wanna know the results. So I guess to the leadership too, is there, um, I mean, I don't know, maybe they're not invested, I don't know. I guess, I guess my, my question really is, is there a plan to sort of share this information with the, the high school um demographic and, you know, could that be an opportunity to share these resources that were, you know, in some of these things that are available to sort of follow up to the survey, um, you know, with some of the information that's been shared tonight as well?
Well, it's the CDC, Liz, and there's a two-year lag.
I'm, I'm asking these guys. Thanks, Lisa.
Um, we I echo kind of what Zach had said, we haven't really administratively dove into the new data, but the two thousand nineteen data was being looked at. Chris and I have partnered with New Hampshire Growth Partners to take a look at that data and then make um some sort of like, I don't like to say it in a pamphlet, but that's really kind of what it is, um, an infographic of um, kind of essentially what they have done. Um, of staggering statistics or information, highlighting positives and then highlighting areas of growth. And then on the back of that is um gonna be different resources. So that's one thing that we're sharing with the community. Um, they're also, I think it's for them to look at the two thousand twenty-one data. They don't have the raw data. We have the raw data, so it's, that's like above my pay grade of how they deal with that issue. Um, and then um, I would like to see what it looks like when they compare the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one to see if it's worth looking at them doing the two thousand twenty-three, but that's kind of where we're at right now. It takes a very, very long time. I had to submit this like, I think like last February and I, they're just now like putting it on paper. So it's kind of a long process.
And do you find, I guess to follow up, I mean, do you find that, I mean, is there ever a point where it's ineffective or there's frustration with the, the lag time or the, the ability to respond? Like, is there anything that we should be getting sooner to respond to? I mean, what is, like, what's your, been your experience in this process?
Yeah, and it's, it's a volunteer. Um, I learned about it through a, a board that I sit on. Um, and the New Hampshire Growth Partners partners with us, so um I think they're paid by BDAS, the Bureau of Drug and Alcohol. It's like a small grant that they have to work with schools. They've done it with Carroll County in the past and we're like their second school that they're doing it with. So I think they're just also very new of it. Um, it's, they're volunteering to do it, so I'm not complaining that someone's diving into our data for free. Um, and they're looking at all of the data versus these folks, I think we looked at, I think like eighty questions. Um, and so unfortunately, just the way the state works, it's a little sore, but that's okay.
I also think that as we enter the fall semester, we're gonna be looking to do this conversation at, with, at the high school
Yeah.
With, with the students, with the administration, to really kind of community-wise fill out you know, where, where we wanna go as a community.
Yeah, and we were also talking about it um as like an education for our peers. Uh, we were thinking we could make signs to like educate them on the really serious um results that we thought could have an impact on like, I don't know, creating an urgency in our community and like making this like need to solve problems and solve these really like clear problems in our data, so.
Okay, thank you. We have Carrie and then Margot.
I'm just so impressed by all of your work on this and I'm just geeking out a little bit, but um, I always offer UNH, I'm a nursing professor at UNH, but um, we work closely with Carroll County for all of their analysis. Um, but one of the things that this just brought up for me was that UNH has a whole center where they do data messaging. So for instance, we used to say like twenty-five percent of students smoke, but it's actually more effective to say, you know, seventy-five percent of students don't smoke and this is like join them or something like that. But I was thinking specifically about some of the like, the things where often people feel lonely or feel like they don't have someone to reach out around like, you know, five percent of students have expect, have experienced sexual assault. You're not alone or like that whole realm of things. So just as you put things together, there's a So just as you put things together, there's a whole set of local resources on like how to message your data or state your data so that it can be like comforting and impactful.
That sounds great.
Thank you, Carrie. Margot?
I bring this up every time and I, so I'm a little bit of a perfectionist and I'm a little bit of patient. But there's a part of me that feels as though our orientations are a missed opportunity to connect students and students about the resources we have and to begin to normalize the conversation. And I, I say it every year, I feel like we missed the boat at our middle school to start talking about these topics earlier. We do a lot of fun socializing our kids, but a lot of overcoming the hurdle and getting into high school is opening the conversation. And it's much better done by students. And I would love to see if there was a place where you could be mentors to the planning of the orientations and make sure it's put on the agenda because it's critical and it's at a time of year when the stress isn't there yet. And that's the goal, right? What's the tool belt we need so that when we hit it, we know where to go? And that could be a flow chart, I don't, whatever visually you want to use, but I want the orientation to be updated.
Yeah, so as to us, student to student is the mentor group that we have at the high school. It's a club, it's a club of volunteers that are there to mentor the freshman students from the first day that they're there until the day that they become sophomores. And we're currently working to create this freshman seminar program through Mentor Mondays, which would be an opportunity where each class, each advisory group would get a mentor of a student, a student that is sophomore through senior year, that would be there to talk to them. And there would be a curriculum surrounding that. Some of it is study habits, time management, but that would also, we could also incorporate things like mental health. And it's also something that we're looking to create a little class or some fun game that's surrounded around the idea of mental health and where to get help on the actual orientation day for freshmen. Cause they all come in one day before the rest of us do. So there's a fun game where they have to go find their guidance counselor and things like that. So we're looking to maybe incorporate what they could act, you know, so they could learn what they can actually do with that guidance counselor and what they're there to help them with, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you all so very much for all your hard work.
Great work.
We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. If you would like to stay for the rest of our meeting, you're more than welcome. It's not the most interesting meeting.
Thanks a bunch, everybody. Very impressive.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, we will move on, on our agenda to the superintendent's report.
So I don't know that I want to follow up that group. Excellent, excellent job. Two, just two things in the memo, just, just had a quick update for you on the Portrait of Graduate work. We'll be closing up the survey instrument will be in the next, probably midnight tomorrow night. We'll be, but we're turning it off. I got, I'll have an update tomorrow on where we're at in terms of number of participants. So that's continues to roll along with June sixth as the date where our, our working group will be coming back together to try to, well, from when that closes, great schools partnership will be using their data person to do some pre-chewing for the group. And then it'll be given out to the working group on June sixth. And then we'll do some, some initial, some initial bucketing of information we'll use towards Portrait of a Graduate. City Council, what Nathan and I, when we get to Nathan, we'll, I guess we can talk in a little bit more depth. Just so you're aware, city council conversation around budget continues. We, we met, we, as, as our department of the city came to a work session at the library on the fifteenth. It was part of an all-day session with the city council. And then last night, we did some follow-up work with questions that were generated for all the different departments in those sessions. And then we had follow-up information for the city council last night. So Nathan and I did that as well and Nancy stopped in on the library one for that. So those are the things that are part of the memo. Just pull up the other. I did include it in there and we can, if we get, when we get to the financial memo, I did include for you the budgets, the slides that we utilized with the city council. And that was at that initial meeting, not the follow-up from last night. I wanted to make sure we were really transparent about how within the guidelines we were given by the city, the city manager, because I think we talked about this the last time. This is, we're now at the stage where the city manager, based on your, your recommendations, things that came from other departments, made decisions about what to push forward to the city council. And then we were, the format and the, what they asked for us to present was, you know, was laid, laid out for us by, by the city manager. So, but I wanted to make sure you were, it was transparent, what we were communicating to the city council. Because I think we could talk, again, we can talk about this a little bit more later. The, just to continue to be aware that not all of the things that we had said we would like to see in the local budget and not in ESER, they were not initially proposed as part of the city manager's proposal. Some of those, some of those positions were pushed, were requested to be pushed from her proposal into, back into ESER. And we can talk about that a little bit more later. But anyways, I want to make sure you had that. The, you have the email summary from, on the board stuff. You have the, the field trip memos on, on things that we have recently approved. And then just a reminder on the meeting on the thirteenth, that that includes some time to honor retirees from the school district. And then you have two letters of resignation, as we talked about before. Those, that's just notification to you that those are occurring. And then I'll turn it over to Nathan for some financial stuff.
I think we have some questions. Carrie, do you have a question?
My question is budget, so I could go after Nathan.
And before we do that, I just want to thank Carrie. She's really put herself out for our strategic plan work. So I know I went to one of the events and you were there working very hard. And then I know Zach told me that you've been doing a lot of extra work, so thank you. It's helping to make a strategic plan process work even more smoothly. So thank you for putting yourself out.
So true, super valuable. Has, you know, has done a lot of our focus group work, which has been really helpful.
Margot?
On the focus groups, can you, maybe Carrie, since you ran them, can you give us a sense of the numbers of parents that attended to the open? I know the student ones are required, so sort of.
I didn't do any of the parent ones.
So what, what was the number?
So at Wamase.
I can tell you about Wamase.
Go ahead.
I, we estimated, we pivoted a little bit and we used boards and had a very big group think. But in two hours, two and a half hours, we had about sixty people come through and provide feedback.
Okay, and what about?
And I think we were a little ahead of that at the, at the high school. So, so we had the library and we're in the kind of bowl towards the projection screen. I think if we, again, we didn't have an official head count, but I think we were, we were probably in that sixty to seventy range in terms of the number of folks. And it was a good spread. It was a good spread across grade levels. So I was a little worried, I think it was, we were going in, were we gonna exclusively high school parents? Were we gonna, gonna get exclusively Portsmouth parents? And I think we had a nice mix. I know one of my groups that I ran was definitely heavy SAU fifty. Turnout, which was good. And, and there were some differences in what people had said.
And my follow-up to that was, in light of that, I know hour minutes from our session are included. But I, a lot of people are asking like, where are the meetings posted? Where are the minutes of the meetings? Where are the summaries of these focus groups? So where can people go to see progress to date and transparency of information?
So I would say there is not, I mean, right, what we've done is we've taken, we took the information that was provided to us. It's all been pushed to GSP at this point. So that's a combination of all the different focus group information, all the, what will be the survey stuff. And again, we have someone who's gonna do kind of a pre-chew of, of that data and it's coming back. We don't necessarily, I don't think we ever announced or were intending to have, you know, like, in some cases, I mean, we're talking sticky paper with, you know, with people scripting what was given, you know, bullet, you know, stickers for things that people reinforced, you know, that type of stuff. We don't have, we don't have a repository where there's like a, here are the pictures of what people did at each of those different sessions. So, so I don't know. I would say that has not been part of the plan, not because we're trying to be opaque, but just it wasn't part of the plan that here's all the raw stuff that's coming out of focus groups and/or survey information, so.
Plus it goes to the statistician, correct? Unless the statistician is going to.
Turn around some intermediate, turn around some intermediate project, a product that would go back to the working group.
So it'd be possible for us to see that? So I think that the, from the point, so what came out on the survey? If you took the survey, question two had some specific things. Those were already initial themes from the focus groups. As those get, and then I believe what the plan is will be that the planning group, I don't know what you call it, what's?
Working group.
Working group, the working group will receive essentially a lot of potential themes with the data grouped. The challenge, I think, and it, and again, it's a tight timeframe, but the, the data are not cleaned. They're not edited, they're not redacted, like there's just not time to do that. But I can check if the board can get that interim. Here's however many preliminary themes and supporting or exemplar data from them. Does that?
I mean, yeah, it's what we discussed, I, I thought it was what we discussed as a board with it being a board goal. I know a lot of parent, I know when we did the superintendent search, we were required to print all surveys, all raw dot data, post every meeting, post pictures of like, so I guess I'm just confused with.
So procedurally, I'd just say that we've been treating, so we haven't, so if you're, when you're going through the superintendent search process, you had a group of people operating as a, as a subcommittee or as work of the board. So we've been treating this as people who are working for me, not as a subcommittee of the board.
Even though it's a board goal, okay.
But that board goal, the way we've been treating it is it's funneling through me. So we haven't been posting it as like a one meeting. We haven't been, we haven't been producing minutes of, of those conversations. We, we just haven't been treating it in that, in that arena at all, so.
Do you think it would be possible to pivot going forward and provide a little more color to the board? I mean, I totally respect, like especially if parents are ill-informed about, like they're writing personal stuff about their kid in the survey and you don't want to put that out there publicly or, you know, if somebody's complaining about a teacher or whatever. Totally get it. But if there's any way for you to just like put a little bit more detail in your memo, even if it's just top line, like, you know, the strategic planning committee elevated like these themes in our conversation, is this what we're exploring next?
None of that.
Okay. It would just be helpful to have more, I think we were expecting a little more transparency about the process.
So one thing, we do have minutes, so minutes can be shared from those meetings.
But they haven't done.
But those we do have. But the conversation or the data. That, and so if there's specific things that you want, I can bring it and, does that make sense?
As is available, that doesn't invade anybody's privacy within the bounds of the process. So if it's like too burdensome to redact things, respect that, not trying to create a team of people to do a ton of work. But particularly where there's like yes or no questions or there's like simpler things where people aren't like, well, my kid's third grade teacher was like hideous and like, I think we want to fire this principal or whatever. Like, I don't want to see that with names, but it would just be helpful just to have a little bit more color on the process. Do you feel that's something that?
It's all this is, oh, so there's two pieces to it. So there's two, so we have a process about how we're gonna go about doing this. And we established where the board was in that process. And I'm trying to determine whether or not the board wants to take a different role in that process now.
When we started this conversation as a board, we said there would be month, like updates at every board meeting on where it was going. We said there would be Zoom access to these focus groups. There's like a lot of things that may have pivoted, which is fine. But it would just be helpful to know, oh, we decided not to do this because, or we're going in this direction because.
Okay. But I, I think the other, the other challenge we're up against with all, with all this stuff all the time is also timeline. So, so it's, we're trying to do this within, I'm, 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 we're not trying to, I feel like we're having a conversation like we're trying to hide something. Totally not. We're just trying to move really fast to try to, to try to fit within what the board wanted us to do through the process that we, that we had laid out through our, through our conversations with GSP. I'm more than happy to be, again, really, I'm hearing like we're, we're, we're not being transparent. And there's absolutely no effort on our part to be, to not be clear with the board about what's going on or hide anything, so.
I, I also, I also think too, that it's not really, it, I, I want to take a little bit off of Zach because there's things that you guys are saying right now that as you're saying them, I'm recalling. But I, I don't know that I was an advocate as a school board member on that group for those things. And so I think that Nancy and I need to be, you know, those, those folks to do that. So rehearing this is good. And then like, I think that comes on in the context goes. And, and to be frank, the, the issue, the confidentiality stuff is mostly from the students because they spoke freely. And we don't want anything to happen to that, you know?
And I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's putting in and I don't want to create more work. But just if there are opportunities for more transparency going forward, I think that that would be beneficial.
I, I will follow up with Leah because, and just have that conversation with her, if that's okay with you, Zach.
Yeah, great.
Liz?
I guess I, I would agree with Zach in, or as far as the analysis of this being under Zach and not being, you know, it's not hiring the superintendent. This is something that's under the superintendent's purview. And I guess I, I'm a little bit concerned, I know that there, there has been discussion, but I think the only thing the board agreed on was the timeline to come back and, you know, report about what the process was or where we were at in the process. And my concern is, is if the board starts receiving minutes or delving into some of this information, the information is really not, it's not there to be delved into right now. The information's supposed to go to this company, company's supposed to take it under their wing and they're supposed to, you know, do what they will with it to provide, provide something. And so I guess I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with the board getting micromanaging about the process. We committed to the, the schedule and the calendar and maybe it'd be good to have a refresher about, you know, pull that back up about where we're at or when our next update is. But I, I'm a little bit concerned with, you know, having to post minutes and, and delve into stuff because really the, the final product is where we're gonna get that information.
Margot? I'll just clarify, I, it was unclear to me, it was not a board committee, like all the other committees. So I, I see now why minutes aren't posted and meetings aren't posted. I, I thought, and I'm not being micromanaging, but I know I'm often accused of that in this session, so I will clarify that. My interest was, I thought it was decided as a board that when we went to only two board members, it was gonna be frequent updates. That, that, that's all I was asking of like, and I think more than a, we had our focus groups, next step is survey, because that's on the timeline. We know that update. I think it's more like, these are the things that are evolving or we didn't get this participation so that it's the board goal, we can chew on it. And then when things come at us, when there are deciding pivot points, we won't be coming at it blind. Because there are gonna be those moments, I think, maybe not, maybe I'm totally misunderstanding the process of the board. I guess maybe I'm hearing the board is not involved in any of the decisions on the documents. Is that, is that where I'm confused?
Is it not that the Portrait of Graduate goes to the board? And we approve that and then that gets sent out as a draft or we don't, we don't have an approval?
So, so the conversation that we've, that we've been having is that the, the, the working group would develop a draft and then the working group would share that draft with the board and the public to say like, are we, where are we at? Are we hitting the mark? Are we not hitting the mark? What do people think? And then there'd be another opportunity for feedback, specifically at the board level and then also the general public. And then we'd utilize that information to go back and try to finalize the portrait.
Possibly multiple times.
So we, so this is not a like, it's not, we go in on June sixth, nobody's seen anything. We come out with some random stuff that feels like detached and then that's it, it's done. The goal is to go do that. Now, we, I haven't seen the data yet. So I, I mean, I just know the focus groups that I was, that I ran, which were only two. So, so I don't have like, right now, if you ask me like, what are the themes that are emerging? I don't know. So I know my little piece of the elephant right now. So, so there's not like, like, we don't have like stuff that we're not sharing right now. We're not even to the point, we can just tell you like how many people went to the sessions. We could, and then I don't even have the data yet on how many people have filled out the survey yet as of like today. So, so I don't even have that to give you right now. So it's not that we have it, we're not sharing, we don't have it yet.
And, and I'll be clear, my question of asking for the people was not to micromanage, what was to find out, are we reaching the people? So that we can pivot because we took on, I guess, the board's role of taking this on as a goal is we're doing the little pieces and maybe we move it out of a goal because it's been moved to someone else. But that would be a critical piece of information. If we didn't reach our audience and we've counted it as a board goal, then we're not. and we've counted it as a board goal, then we're not serving the board goals. So I was not trying to micromanage, I really just was curious if we had
I mean, would I, would I have loved to have seen, to have like standing room only in the high school library when we did the focus groups show? I would have.
Right.
Um, I think the qual, I mean, we had, I think we ran, we ran two waves of, on the high school one. We had two waves of, um, two sessions, which were broken out into four separate groups, maybe five? Trying to remember, one, we had five. And each of those, in each of those groupings, um, you know, we had, you know, six to 10 people per group. And, you know, so um, we're asking the same questions, we're on the same timeline, we had the same, we used the same presentation in advance to, to reframe, what are we doing? What are we, you know, what are the questions? Here's how to understand those questions. Um, use the same protocols and how we went about it. I mean, it's not, I think, and I think we talked about this before, I mean, this is not, when we were talking about focus groups in this case, there's lots of different ways you could do focus groups. And this is not um corporate, you know, do you like this flavor of Doritos? You know, and it's not, and it's not um PhD level uh controls for, for protocols and um, and whatnot. Um, or, well, it depends on maybe the people's methodology.
You do qualitative research.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying that even, but even within, even within qualitative, like, we don't have a six-page methodology document about how we are going to conduct our qualitative research and how we're going to code it and those types of things, like that's, you know, it's
I, I think if it's okay, or I, I think at the next meeting, I can hopefully with Zach, put something together that just has like more of what you're looking for, if there's room on the agenda.
We'll have more of that by next week.
Yes, but, but I'll try to summarize the back too, so that it's not on, because I feel badly that I have not advocated for what it was the board. Or I forgot.
I, it, it was a clearness issue, I'm
Yeah.
I've reached clearness.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Margot. And Carrie.
I, I think it is, it's becoming clear to me, hearing this discussion, that there have been some, maybe some, there has been some confusion over what this was going to look like. Because I'm, I was under the same impression of, with, as Margot, that um, that the board would have a much more significant role in this whole process. Not just the portrait of the graduate, but the entire strategic plan process. Um, and I feel like that's sort of like slipping away, like first we had the timeline shift that wasn't, didn't fit with what the board had, had requested. And then we, either the board, or the steering committee ended up with only two members of the board and not, not more. And um, and so it just, and now I'm learning, as Margot did, that this, it's not a committee of the board. Um, and I feel like so far, the only participation we've had was a very, very limited one hour session, where I felt like I barely got to express my ideas. And I, and that concerns me because I think one of our, the significant role of our board is to to assist with creating the, the vision of where we want the schools to go. And so I'm not clear on how we're going to be able to do that in this, if the process continues in this way.
So, so I think it's
Especially if we're learning things at the same time that the public is, and not necessarily getting a chance to
Well, and it doesn't have to be, I mean, the timing of when, so it doesn't have to be the same night of sharing with a draft of what comes out of the working group is the same day as, we can do all this stuff, it's just, we just have to extend. You know, it's so the, because now, what we're trying to do was, we're working hard to have a, a finalized portrait, which, which then sets up the work around strategic planning. And I want to talk about strategic planning in a second, because, because I definitely have a different conceptualization of what the strategic planning work might look like. But the um, our goal was to have a draft, um, basically before people um left for the school year. Um, to then be able to share that draft with you, um, to be able to take feedback on that draft, share that draft. And I think, just made, made clear, I mean, it sounds like this is definitely a desire and we can definitely do this. Have that as one, uh, its own incremental stop, which would be some level of conversation um with some gap before we're talking to the public, where the board has an opportunity to um, to have firmer control over the draft. Uh, and then go to the public with the draft with his, um, that way. Sounds like that's probably more what people would like. Um, and then the goal, you know, my goal was to then, the way I've been talking about it to the public. And maybe this is, again, a, a difference in the way in which the board would like it to, and I'm your servant, so I'll do what you want. Um, but, but my thing was that this, the engagement with with the public and the greater community was around establishing the North Star, what do we want as the endpoint? And then, a lot of this, a lot of the strategic planning work, the, the creation of the strategic plan was to be going back to your, the people who, who work for you and saying, okay, this is where we're at, this is where, here are the resources that are available to us, here's where we want to go. Um, okay, teams of folks, how are we going to get there? And then coming back with those drafts to just say, this is how we think, here are these, you know, here are these five things uh that are part of the, of the portrait that we think are really important. We've been working in teams, and here are, um, here are our versions of action plans that would lead to those things over the next three to five years. That's, in my mind, that's where I thought the most, that work most productively would be done, and then shared with the board for comment, changing, tweaking, adjusting, as opposed to having the um, the portrait developed, like here's, here's where we want to be in three to five years, and then coming to you and saying, okay, you build an action plan.
Um, no, I saw it the other way around too.
Okay, alright.
We built the portrait and then
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Um, so one point of clarity that I, I realized in a different meeting that I had misunderstood.
Yeah.
Are you still, I, I was under the impression that the, the people on the committee would have to be a part of it all the way through to the end. But then I think I heard something about the portrait of the graduate working committee being a separate committee from the actual
So I, yeah, I don't know that the, I don't know that the group So I think about what we have, we have a combination of like stakeholders, it's, it's um from different categories of folks, right? So they represent different job categories, they represent different interests in the community. Um, I still wouldn't turn, so let's say that, out of that, building off our conversation tonight, let's say that one of the things that emerges from the community conversation is, we want, and this was definitely present in some of my focus groups, we want uh students who are um s- some, I don't know how to say it, but like something around mental health, you know, like they feel um, they feel comfortable in themselves, they're resilient. They feel, and then people had stuff like happy. Uh, and so what, so then coming out of that, then, then I would turn around and say, okay, um, what are the action steps we're going to take to get to, to that outcome? I'm, I'm, I lost your question, and I apologize, let me again with it.
I was asking specifically about the people responsible for each portion.
So I wouldn't, so, so I don't think that even in that, so let's say it's, it's, uh, we want well-adjusted, um, um, you know, uh, resilient students who, whatever, let's say it's something in that realm. I might turn a goal like that over, it's not going to be the, the, I don't see it as the most productive plan coming out of the, the P O G working group that we have right now. Um, it's like, I'm going to turn that over to, who are my, like, who is my team of like eight people? Who are my best mental health people in the district? Who's the best trained, who also comes with a variety of perspectives around that issue? And then you guys as a working group, I want you to go off and I want you to develop, um, I want you to develop a three-year plan that speaks to this particular issue, and then I want you to bring it back to me, and then I can bring it back to you. Um, that's my thought process.
So you're sort of, you are the steering committee in that sense then, and you're, you're reaching out to different resources to
I'm not, I'm not, again, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I, I don't want this to be Zach's plan. I'm not interested in being Zach's plan.
I'm just trying to see, I'm trying to understand who's like leading the process, because I thought it was the board initially.
Sure.
Then I heard it was the, the portrait of a graduate, or then I thought it was a steering committee, that would be, do the whole thing. Then I thought, and, and to be clear, it's not that I object to anyone on the committee, I just would have preferred to have a more of a
A bigger voice.
And I would have volunteered, but I misunderstood
Yep.
what the, what the um responsibility was. So now I'm trying to figure out, does that
So I, so I would say this, so I think that in some of the initial material we received from um, from Great Schools Partnership, I think there was a discussion of the working group slash steering committee as having like a, like a fuller, longer role. I think that was, I think that was what they presented.
That was.
Um, and so, so I'm, so I will tell you, I just think, again, as opposed to this group of people, all good people, we invited them to be part of the working group for a reason. I still wouldn't turn over to that group of folks who have generalized knowledge in a bunch of different areas to say, okay, here are these very specific targets that we want to hit. Okay, you know, representative folks with, who may or may not have the expertise in this particular arena, um, we're going to collectively just kind of come up with this. I can do that, I'm happy to do what the board wants in terms of process. I want the board to feel good about the process, I want the board to not feel like the process has been hijacked, or that your expectations about how, what is necessary in a process to have a product that is um reflective of what you want, I want all those things to occur. So if the things that I'm describing are not aligned with that, we have the ability to shift direction, we have the ability to, to I, I think GSP is very um open to making sure that you're happy with what the product is. So I'm very open to adjusting um what it is I've been laying out.
Well, I guess I'd like to know from them why they initially recommended the steering committee, and maybe we could find out what, you know, why, why, why wouldn't we do that?
Would it be helpful to have Leah come and talk to us at our next meeting? Do you think that would clarify some of the questions that people have?
I, I, perhaps, yeah, I think it's worth, I, I think you want to have an ongoing conversation, you're paying a vendor for, you know, for something, and I think it's good to bring that vendor in. Sounds like you have a lot of questions, I think you should bring the vendor in and, and have some dialogue with that vendor about, about process and about if the, if the shift, and it is a, it is, that is a choice that I made, that again, I didn't think was a, it was an attempt to undermine the process. It was this, a decision on my, I didn't even think it was like a large thing, in all honesty. Um, uh, I thought you were going to get a better product as a result of that choice. If that's the wrong choice, and, and uh you feel like you want to go in a different direction, and you'd rather have a representative um set of folks in a steering committee create your strategic plan, I'm more than happy to, to, uh, we have the ability to do that, and we can, we can do that.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, that's not what I'm saying, I just want to
Oh, no, no.
I think these, these changes are happening without our knowledge, and so that's what's troubling to me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think I had a misunderstanding maybe about what our board representation was going to be on the committee, and maybe more of an expectation that maybe I just assumed and didn't actually ask about, which makes me stupid, but um to have like a little bit more feedback, so not to put it on you, Zach, but just maybe have board members who are in the room, and can they do an update to just say, hey, this is where we're at? Like, I don't think that any of us are trying to tell you to change the process, delay the process, or like
Yep.
go in a direction that you don't think is going to get us the best result. It's more just to understand it at a deeper level.
And I don't want you to be in a situation where you're, you're like, maybe I'm, maybe I haven't listened well, or maybe I'm yeah, I can't remember the language you just used, but I don't want you in that position.
Has a good history of not coming to
So I, but I, but I don't, I don't want you in that, I don't want you in that position. And I, and it, it sounds like, that I'm hearing from multiple folks, a desire for the board to have a greater role in the crafting of both the
No, it's not a role in crafting, it's just to get more clarity on what you're doing.
Sure.
That's it. Okay, well, I think
Not to change what you're doing, just to know what you're doing.
I think we can end this conversation by inviting Leah to come to our next meeting and asking her to outline.
Can I make a, can I, can I ask a follow-up since there's been multiple other? I, I guess, I'm a bit concerned because we've already had this conversation, there was a conversation when Nancy and Carrie were designated to the board around um them being on the board and the fact that, or on, on this committee, and the fact that it was a steering committee, and that they were steering, that there wasn't so much an influence, but they were steering the process. And I know for a fact that these conversations happened, because I sat next to Lisa and Pip and watched text messages go back and forth between several board members about how you were concerned, Lisa, about, you know, the fact that multiple board members weren't on there, or that somebody wasn't on the committee, or that there wasn't, we had a discussion in public about somebody not being from the high school and, and not having representation from the high school, and we had a whole meeting and discussion about this. I'm a little bit concerned that we're going in circles here.
And I said all those things publicly.
Lisa, it's not your turn to talk, so.
Thank you, Liz.
Carrie.
And then we're going to stop. Oh, I'm sorry, Danielle.
No, you didn't, I'm sorry.
My suggestion is that for our next board meeting, I'll put together a more specific summary. And then we'll see if, including the whatever minutes, the whatever I can pull together, we'll see if that answers your questions. And if then you're on that, and then if not, then you can provide specific suggestions that we can bring back. Or we can have Leah come talk to, to us, would that satisfy?
That would be great.
And I think in some ways, that summary is going to be more productive than Leah, who Leah's, like, I'll do what you guys want me to do in many ways. So um, so in some ways, I think they'll be more productive. I just want to make sure it's crystal clear, I mean, again, servant of the board, I want you, I want to do what you want me to do. Uh, and so if there's a, if there's a concern that already the process is not, the elements of the process are not where you want it to be, I absolutely will adjust course.
I don't hear that concern.
Okay.
I don't hear that concern.
I think there needs to be a motion based on what we discussed in our retreat, that if, if there's going to be direction from the board, it needs to be everybody voting that that's the direction we're going in.
I don't think we need a motion, I think we, we all agree, we have
I think because I offered.
Right, that we can, and, and Carrie, I'd be happy to work on that with you.
Yes, I did not mean to.
No, and we'll, you know, present that to the board at our next meeting. Okay.
Can I harass Nathan, please?
Can you what?
Harass Nathan instead of Zach for a minute? Um, sorry, this question is now like an hour overdue, but so I was just curious on your thoughts on the city budgeting part. And I think I saw the final like increase that they proposed was like 3.5. But in our conversations, we've talked about like, four is going to be the bare minimum for the next few years. And I'm just curious if you can comment on like, how those discussions happened with inflation and all the post-COVID?
No, I'm sorry, are you talking about budget, are we on the next agenda item?
It was Zach, and Zach's I'm trying to give Zach a second to breathe, and then
Ready.
You're ready, you're in, never mind.
Alright, so we're on to the next agenda item, which is
No, I think it was from the superintendent report.
There's some bleed over, so maybe it makes sense to have Nathan do some general
Okay.
financial, and then we're happy to chime in with a variety of different comments on what's happening.
I've queued up, I've joined the, I've joined the um, I've joined the Zoom session, so I can throw a couple of things up here if folks are interested, but I want to talk budget or financials first, let me talk financials and set it aside, and then
And then we go budget.
So the financial report is there, I hope that the memo, please forgive me that the memo is the same memo. And I think this, it's telling, it's telling for me, and I, I'm not sure if it's, if it's meaningful for you guys, but I probably change a hundred words or less, right? Because there's, the way this financial report, and I'm going to dabble with a new one next year, I'm going to go back to old school. It's going to be something that the superintendent, who uses this as a decision-making tool, is more familiar with, the assistant superintendent is more familiar with. I, I want to pay all respect to this cycle, what this document has been, but I think this document came about um at the behest or, or suggestion of some really insightful school board members of the past. Because the district, the district wasn't really maintaining encumbrances. And so you had a financial report that pretty much showed only an update on what you were spending day by day, month by month. It gave you no projection of where you were going for the rest of the year. Not the school, nor the city, were using encumbrance of payroll. Eighty-something percent of our money spent is on people and benefits. The system can and will, and we're still tweaking it to make sure it's accurate and, and defensible or, or decision-making valuable, uh, if I can say it. With, uh, I'm not completely leaning into it, but we're, we're using it now. From the moment that we commit to it July 1, Zach, Patty and myself, July 1, you know what our salary and all the related payroll expenditures, expenditures are? That's encumbered, and then every time we cut a check in payroll, or run a payroll, the actual expense goes up and the encumbrance goes down. If, by the time we get to October, certainly 1st of November, all your teachers are in, your parents, school's been started, all your year-round people are there. Everybody's in, and the encumbrance should show what your commitment is through the end of the year, what that obligation would look like. And then as your directors and principals and other administrators start making commitments by issuing purchase orders to our requisition and procurement system, those create encumbrances, so at any moment, you have a really decent picture of what's left that's not already spoken for. There was a plan, and there's still a budgeted, I concept of what it's for, but you know, there's also the opportunity for me to go in as your financial manager and say, we haven't written a purchase order, nor do we, have we spent money, but I know these three things are happening, and they're big-ticket items. We're gonna hire a consultant to do strategic planning, haven't done it yet, but I'm going to commit 30 grand and write a pseudo PO, right? I don't think, other than, other than a rudimentary purchase order system I don't think other than, other than a rudimentary purchase order system, we weren't encumbering any payroll. And this tool came about as a way to project where we were based upon what our spend patterns have been in the past. And I don't want to completely toss it out because I think it's become a meaningful tool for, I'm sure somebody, soon as I stopped doing it, somebody will raise a hand and say that meant something to me. But next year I'd like to try what for me is a traditional budget report. Here's my budget, here's what I've spent so far, here's what I'm committed to spend in encumbrance, and here's the balance. Then we'll work through the noise that pops up that scares you and I'll explain what it is. And historically I've found that I, I tend to start putting notes in the margin. I start doing it for me so I remember month to month what, how to answer your questions. After a while, I just start leaving the notes because it reminds you, we already asked that question and dealt with that. And that reality will continue to show. So I'd like to play with that. But I'm doing the memo, I think has, I hope it's helped a little bit, but basically I just go in and go, yeah, that's still true, that's still true, that's still true. So all of those things are still true. There's still a measurable savings being generated by vacancies in our paras and our custodians and our maintenance and our, we had a clerical to boot. We haven't yet paid out the final stipends for coaches and advisors for our clubs, et cetera. That's coming in the next couple of payroll cycles, we'll pay that all out. Of course, in the next couple of payroll cycles, we'll pay everybody out too, it'd be done. So we continue to see, we're going to have overages, budget overages in some of the special ed areas, speech and OT and maybe psychology, although that might have righted itself a bit. We're definitely going to be over budget in our, out of district tuitions. But remember, we, we increased that area almost a half a million dollars in next year's proposed budget because we're behind and we're just trying to catch up every cycle. We've added a couple of new students, so there's a couple of new, new, you know, costs in there now that will roll over into next year. But down the, down the stretch, the other thing I would tell you is, I'm exercising Andrew, our new accountant. He's working and it didn't come around for tonight, but I had hoped he's working now on a, on a fund balance projection, which is a tool that I would normally have done Christmas before we finalized any budget and said, what's it going to look like June 30th? Are we going to spend it all? We're going to have money left over, we're going to be hurting? Because I use that as a basis for why would we talk about increases here or there in some of our areas, some areas? He's doing that now to tell us what it looks like for June 30th. And when I come to your June meeting, it'll be a little bit late. This board hasn't, I don't think traditionally done the Christmas in June thing, oh, there's money left over, let's do this and do this and do this and do this. Districts, all, all kinds of districts do that. Here, I think, I, I think that that happens because your, your budget leaders spend well. There's never been a grand expectation that we give back a lot of money here or leave a lot on the table to get back to the city. We don't want to do it and we use it. And so we find ways down the line to use it. But the projection will give you some sense of, of how we're, how we're going to finish in all of those categories. Then we can come back in August or September after we've, you know, finalized it and audited it. But all of that is your financial, I'm sorry it took so long, but I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I'm not telling you much in the memo other than what I've already told you, but there's not a lot of new news there right now. Happy to take questions though.
Any questions for Nathan?
So then I'm going to get.
Oh, Carrie, you have the question.
Yeah, mine's on the financial report. Is yours on the financial?
No, it's on the big budget.
Okay, so this is kind of, maybe it's a segue between the two. The overages in the OT and speech, is there a prediction that the rates of that is going to go up from next year? And did we plan for that in terms of like their hourly, that's what I'm.
Yeah, we didn't, you won't find any big adjustment in the budget for that. In all of those, in all of those related services, we call them, they're all related, especially at OTPT, speech, et cetera. We have some placeholders for contracted services, but most of those services we are able to provide in-house with our staff. In one case, for instance, I think it's off the top, no, I can't tell you, it was either speech or OT. We had a maternity that we were unable to hire a sub to cover. Had we hired the sub, that cost would actually have shown up in substitute lines. But because we couldn't, we had to contract out for a vendor to come in and provide that service. So this year, instead of seeing an occasional, an occasional contracted service for somebody to do an external or a third-party evaluation, which is what would normally get charged there, we actually charged 18 or $20,000 of a body paid to a vendor as a contract instead of hiring a sub. In the other area, we simply had, this is what was happening in psychology. We simply had a flood of, of extra consults that had to be done that we, we farmed out as opposed to doing them internally. And we, and that happened before we got, we have a great intern in, in the program in the building or in the district. And the intern's able to help with a lot of that, but the intern wasn't in place at the time. So we had to spend a couple of nickels. So we, we kind of treat those like contingency because normally they don't all go sour in the same cycle, the same year. So we don't bump them all up and go crazy because normally this one might be over by a few thousand, but the others never really get touched. So to your question, we didn't make any big adjustment there because Jeanette Souther, our director of people services, didn't, didn't anticipate that that was really something that is trending, that we should chase.
Okay.
It was just a, you know, an odd, an oddity in this year.
I get it, thank you.
Anything else about the financial?
Do you want to talk about the budget?
So let me, I was, I was going to, let me talk about the budget just briefly and see if this helps. And, and also see if I can go in here and share something. Well, I guess I want to, I could stay with this. Let me start this, let me start this way and just say, both, both the police and fire commission, working with those departments and the school department do preliminary work, building budgets. And if you, you know, as a member of the community, you may have watched those, may have participated, you know, they have their public meetings and hearings, et cetera, like we do. I've never watched them all, but I believe they're happening, right? And so we go through this process, but all three of those charter departments submit our proposed budgets that our commissions and board agree to. We submit those to the city manager and the city manager submits a proposed budget to city council. And always in, in past years, it's been in a nice blue, blue spine, you know, full color glossy book. Now they've resorted to a three-ring binder, which helps if you have any adjustments that need to be made in the last moments. But it's a great resource, it's a great tool. It's also an interactive PDF that's out on the city's website. That budget as proposed by the city manager includes the school department and police and fire as long as, as well as general government and public works, you name it. That budget as presented for 24 is $137 million and change, and it represents a 3.67% increase. What I was going to do is take you up your, into the presentation that was offered up last night by the city manager and just tell you that, that the city manager, these are the slides that are on the, on the city's website. This was the slideshow that was presented at council last night. The directive from the council through the city manager and to us as a city department was that they wanted to achieve a budget increase of not more than four and a half percent, which would not even necessarily include the cost of ramping up IT on the city side. We have our own IT department within the school department, so too does the police department, but the city IT, which provides for the library and the recreation department and everything here, legal and HR, you name it. That department has been largely outsourced in the past and now it's, they're actually staffing it and trying to grow to meet the technology needs of the day. So they weren't really expecting that ramp up to be included in 4.5. But that previous slide that I was showing is actually how it finishes, oops. The proposed budget right now, and the city breaks their budget down into operating and non-operating. Non-operating includes some capital and debt service and other things that aren't attributed to any particular department in terms of their operating budget. But all in, they're at 3.67, which includes all of the increases to the IT department. So the conversation kicked off now three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago. It was initially a budget presentation, which again is on the website. It's under city departments of finance and you'll find it under budgets. And the FY24 proposed budget, you'll see all the presentations there. City, the city kicked it off by explaining what they had, what, what, what was included, what the impacts are. They talked about, you know, revenue streams, they talked about tax impact, all of the big overarching conversations. And then Zach presented, and I helped, Zach presented last Monday. We had a, the city council chose to do that budget, super, super budget day, whatever they used to call it. Where they did it, I guess they used to do it on Saturdays, but this time they did it on a Monday. They went nine to three and they just had steady stream of departments coming through. What that included for you in your packet was the presentation that he did that day. And then the city, the council asked questions of each individual department coming through. I guess let me back up and say, the budget that the city manager pushed forward to the council, we talked about once before, our proposed budget that the board agreed to included shifting four positions out of S R. The city manager trying to hit these targets asked us to push back. I say asked us, told us, and we pushed back to S R, the social worker and the math interventionist. So right now in the city's proposed budget, we included the city councillor at the middle school and the math tutor. So the other two are plenty of funding in S R and we can pay for another year.
And we also have the outdoor education.
The outdoor.
You had already decided it was going to stay in S R.
In S R another year.
So that remained, so in the proposal the council is considering, instead of the one position that you had pushed for, that you, that you said would continue to live in S R. There are right now three. And when we were last night as part of the follow-up conversation, I mean, we definitely got inquiries from the city council around what, how much more ability do you have to absorb more things in S R? And then we, we definitely spent some time talking about our concern. We had, well, one of the questions that came out of the library session was, well, how much would it cost next year? If the positions in the city manager's proposal then were going to be, S R dries up after next year? How much would it cost us as a city to then push all those, those now into the budget? And so it was 430,000 between salary benefits connected with those positions. If the other, the other positions also were pushed into that as well, then this was the dialogue we had last night when one of the councilmen was asking this question. I mean, our concern is about kind of the cliff that we could be facing if all those positions move to S R. I mean, we're pushing $700,000 worth of, worth of folks. I'm assuming as a board next year, there's a good chance you would not be comfortable taking, creating $700,000 worth of, worth of what we'll call new positions in the local budget. And so that was some of the dialogue we're having was the concern about a cliff. And what the impact would be on, on, on students and on our staffing and et cetera, if that was to occur. Now that was, I will say, I don't want to overstate, that was a question, a council member. But, but it was, I think, I think the council, my read is, the council is looking at, there was a lot of one-time money that was utilized last year to offset, offset some costs to the taxpayer. That money is not there this year. And so I think, you know, a 4.5% increase in spending in a year where you have a lot of one-time money doesn't have as big an impact on taxpayers as when that one-time money goes away and now you're trying to increase at 4.5. Because you're trying to backfill for that one-time money and a 4.5% increase for the city as a whole. So for me, two things, one, I think we're, you know, we have at least one more meeting. If not, probably maybe just one more meeting, we'll see. And how much airtime we're going to get in that, we'll, we'll see as well. I think the thing for us to be aware of is that our next cycle could be a very challenging budget cycle. It'd be very different than probably what you've done over the last, the last couple of years. And we'll have to be very thoughtful as we move into those conversations next year.
I anticipate that some of you may, may watch these meetings, you may attend them virtually and, you know, I, I don't, there weren't a lot of people that I met. There weren't a lot of people in the audience, period. But I, I will tell you that it might also be important in case you never get around to it. There were questions that were asked at the Monday meeting at the library, the original, that we spoke to. Zach was asked to, was asked to offer commentary on conversation about how much would it cost? And how does it fit in the priorities maybe? The notion of providing free lunch and breakfast to all students every day. That number is somewhere chasing up against 3 million, 2.9 million dollars maybe. Zach not only shared that, which is a basic that I'd given the city manager some number of weeks ago when the question was asked by council, but also talked about the impact that might have on our Title I funding. Because if everybody's free, you know, artificially, then there's not necessarily any incentive to drive folks to apply for free and reduced. And that application and that process is what feeds our allocation formula for Title I. So we could be losing out on a ticket there that's, you know, in excess of 400,000 every year. There are other impacts that might be less tangible or, you know, more difficult to explain. But they talked about free breakfast and lunch. They asked, as Zach said, for us to look at the positions and the monetary costs. Spelled out the cost of positions added and the positions in S R. Asked us questions about the remaining dollars in S R. There was a conversation and question about the number of resident students leaving to attend private school. Zach offered some commentary on our enrollment and they wondered if maybe it was private schools sucking that up. I think Zach answered the other night that our, our NASDAQ data coming out reports a relatively stable number of Portsmouth residents reportedly being at private schools in the region. So there doesn't seem to be a surge of kids going in that direction. The number was 220 to 10 to 20 over the last three years. There was a question about the special ed increase. I just made a comment a second ago, about a half a million dollars. 350 of that, 400,000 of that was, was a pick-me-up in in tuitions, out-of-district placements, transportation for them. Not only the fact that we've added a couple, but we also have additional costs because they're suffering the same challenges we are, having to staff up and spend extra dollars getting there. There were also dollars for transportation, I think was another 50 or so wrapped up in transportation costs. And another 50 related to students who are, who are through open enrollment being placed, they're not really placed, they're just enrolled by their parents in charter schools, publicly chartered schools in New Hampshire and the services that sometimes follow them. We are not necessarily hiring our own people and sending them out. We're instead just engaging those schools to collaboratively, collaboratively provide the service there and send us our bills. So we added 50,000 to chase that. There's also ultimately a conversation about SRO. And I mean, I could defer to Zach if he can comment, but that's a, it's been a conversation again that we've only had here loosely, but it's a conversation that the council's having.
Yeah, I would say that, I mean, the question for us initially was, at the first session was, I think there's clear interest in the council is, is, members, there's certain members of the council who want to be responsive to constituents who are saying, you should have SROs at all your, at all of your schools. So there's been this kind of back and forth dialogue about, well, how much, how expensive is, is that? And I think we've talked about it here, so we, we don't pay, and there's also this question, this interesting question of who on paper is paying for this? Is the school paying for it? Is it a function of the police? And so there's this, you know, it's one of the, it's an interesting conversation. So just as a reminder, we right now, the, we have the SRO at the high school that's completely within the police budget. There's no, there's no cost to the school at all associated with that. Well, the middle school, the middle school position, we pay half the salary of the middle school position. So in the conversation we were initially having, what we were having, we were saying, well, look, we, what we can tell you is we, our contribution to, to that one position is, I think it's about $56,000 is what we, what we give to that one position. And any additional information, you'd really have to talk to the police department about what that cost would look like. The, the police department in their conversation, Nathan, 179 in the first year, I think was the combination? Between hiring the person, recruiting, training, equipping, was it 179 plus 49 for a cruiser?
No, I think that was.
It was 179 including cruiser.
Including the cruiser and the outfit and the training, they've got, they got training to do year one.
So I think, so as that number started to develop, wow, so we, because I had spitballed at the library, I think I spit, I spitballed a million. Because I had a question from one of the council members about, would, what do you think about SROs? And my response was that the board hadn't taken an official position on SROs across, you know, however, I think it was, and it was unclear what the board, that there was consensus on the board for that move. But I'm not, I can't speak fully because we haven't taken a vote on it. I don't know. But I said that within principles and conversations on that end, that if you're going to spend 800,000, a million dollars on safety, we'd much rather see that invested into mental health and to those types of, those types of things. Because we think that's more likely where threats are going to emerge or around disaffected students who, or people in our community who feel resentment towards the school system, towards their place in the community, that that's more likely to be where those concerns are going to arise. And it also helps our students at the same time. So that was, that's what I relayed. I left it open as to where you guys were. I then got a series of questions from a couple of board members, a, a council members pushing me on that, on that concept and why maybe we should sort of more seriously think about SROs. I think the, and I think last night, I think there seems to be a drifting, it seems a, a, a conversation that's floating around is the idea of not going to all schools. But I think there's, I, I keep hearing an idea floated, which is this having one person. having one person that would drift amongst the three, which goes back to, a lot of people are talking about the officer-friendly model and the possible, you know, floating that. But they've, they've taken no official action and I thought it was interesting that when they were talking about it last night, the discussion was, we can't tell the schools what to do, but if the schools wanted to go to that model, how much would it cost them? So don't know after, but that was the conversation, I just want you to be aware that that was, that was part of the dialogue last night around SROs.
So I think the follow-up that I would offer to you is, there's, the process as it stands right now is that the council isn't going to meet again, I don't think, until Monday, June fifth. June fifth is, from their perspective, the first night that they might consider the budget. But it's a night, also traditionally, I guess it's the night when they will offer up amendments. I can change this, I'd like to, with regard to the school budget, as a piece of the whole budget, I think that part of that, that conversation or that phrase about can't tell the schools what to do, the city council hands us a bottom-line budget, so ultimately the board would act on, if they say, like in this case, they haven't, right now the budget that the city manager proposed does not include money for those two positions we had wanted to move in. So we'll have to fund them with Esser. The reality is, if you could find some way to eliminate two other positions or find other ways to fund them, you could still move them in. It's, you know what I mean, it's not the detail, it's a bottom-line number. I think that their council is passing to us as a department, so I'll tell you that, that's, so June fifth is the next.
If I could just say, because I was there on that Monday, the police chief made his presentation for his budget and he talked about SROs and he expressed a deep concern that they cannot hire police officers today. So one of his concerns was, sure, if you guys all want it, I'm not going to be able to find the personnel. So it was kind of depressing actually to think that if there's a vacancy in our police department, it's really hard to hire a police officer today. He also felt that, I mean, he didn't, he didn't elaborate on it, but he felt that it's not the best deterrent to school violence is SRO in every building. So it's kind of interesting that he followed Zach and, you know, he said, I just have to say this. He said, I have to get it on the table that, you know, it's probably not the best way to go and I'm not going to be able to find the personnel, so.
Liz? Was there any discussion about like what's happening currently with the officers being there, present at drop-off or pickup and where the funding is coming from that? I guess, you know, I, I, it seems like that model may, you know, may as well, you know, or do just as well or effective as far as for our elementary schools. I mean, I think there is some benefit there, but I, I do, you know, reiterate my concerns from last time of, you know, I think there needs to be some direction about what does this look like? You know, if, if there are officers there, you know, are they, are they mingling amongst the children? Are they watching for certain things or like what is, what is going on there? And so I guess, so I'm a little surprised that maybe there wasn't a discussion there. But I, I, I would hope that maybe there could be further discussion about that because that's what, what we're doing currently and we haven't really voted to do that, so to speak, or add that to the budget.
So my impression is that this is a short-term response to, to the upset that the, that the threat caused. I, I, I only say that because I know they're, they're understaffed right now. And so the ability to maintain that type of presence over the long run without an adjustment in personnel, I think would be hard for them. But I don't know that officially. I haven't, I haven't been told that, hey, come the fall, we're not in a position to continue to do that. But it was not part of the budget kind of conversation last night. One, one more thing I just want to plug to, you know, that is in the, that was in the water because we did, we had a question about, you know, enrollment. It was a question about enrollment, you know, the, we did discuss the, the figure, which I think we've shared, I know we shared with you before on those NASDAQ projections that over the last 10 years were down a hundred and eighty students. I, I only say that because I think when people hear that stuff, they start thinking, what can, what can we cut, you know? And that I think, you know, the projection, I think we talked about this too. NASDAQ projects, now their, their information is only as good as the most current data points around building, around whose births, around all those other things, but be over the next 10 years, we'd be down an additional two hundred and sixty-four students. So there were some questions, the other part of that, now I didn't, we didn't spend a lot of time on the two sixty-four number, but we did talk about the one seventy-nine. And then there were some questions, I think, that were generated through, we did speak about changing kind of human geography in the community and, and where is the, where is the growth in families? And, and the fact that we had done a, done a look, the board had done a look in the fall about is there an immediate need to redraw lines? And then just the, the discussion was no, but that we knew that in the long run, we, right now, we don't necessarily have a capacity concern within our existing buildings. We have a, we have a distribution, we need to monitor distribution of students both across grade levels and within, you know, lines. But that we weren't in an immediate position where the board felt that it was necessary to redraw. So all of that was part of the conversation last night.
So how do we do with your question?
We were, we were busy.
Not quite there, very, very helpful. So I guess, I mean, well, that, the follow-up there, so I guess from my understanding from you or from our conversations, we're going to be looking at a minimum of a four percent increase in our budget going forward. And again, this hits a hard year next year. Or, you know, maybe, I mean, is there an opportunity for the school board to advocate for some sort of compromise so we're not stuck? Or, and, and if not, I think, like, it has been floated that, like, we need to look at FTEs and like different kind of equity issues and, you know, that kind of thing. If not, do we need to start doing that sooner? Or by we, I mean, you all.
Yeah.
The royal we. But I don't know. It, it just is disappointing, I think, because I think it was a really tight budget. We have the teacher salaries or we have the biggest contracts. We know what's coming the next two years and it's going to be rough next year if we don't do something.
I think there's no avoiding rough. Unless we're going, unless we're going with a significant ask of the council next year. I think we, I think you've, for a variety of different reasons, with one-time money, COVID money, New Hampshire retirement money, a lot of different things, you've gone through a period of plenty in terms of availability of revenue. And my projection would be even if, and it might change, even if we're not, we're, we're not about to enter a recessionary cycle, which a lot of things would point to the possibility that that's where we're, we're on the verge of, you know, independent of the congressional stuff right now. We are going to be up against some of these, some of these challenges and I, I'm already starting to have those conversations with principals about being really thoughtful as we move into, even now, we're, we're, you need to start thinking about the next budget right now. Like we need to be into that conversation. Hopefully rooted in the portrait of a graduate as a, as a tether to, to what, what we hold most dear. And then as we're building the strategic planning stuff, as part of that, just thinking about the fact that we're going to have to be really thoughtful about what we do. And, you know, I think even amongst some of the commentary from some folks who, the council has some regular people who are reasonably fiscally conservative come to comment on what the council's doing. Even then, I mean, those, I think there was even from some of those folks last night, they were talking about, well, in Portsmouth, we don't like, we don't, we don't, you don't, you don't want to be in a position, council, to have to lay people off. We don't do that here, it's not something we do. So I think as we, if that's going to be the case, and if I think we're going where we're going in terms of the overall picture, then we could sit in the conversations when we, when we accept retirements from people, that is an opportunity to reevaluate a position. That's a, that's a easy, not easy, but it's a, it's a time that's much easier to reevaluate, to evaluate a position and to decide maybe we can do without than when you have a sitting person that's in that role. But I think, I think we're, next budget cycle will be tough. And for us, that really means we need to have, on the, on your paid staff side, as we move into the summer, we'll be having some conversations, again, grounded in the portrait of a graduate, about what we need to do, because really we're, those people at the cost centers are coming to us with their best thought processes about things the first week in October. I mean, that's when we're really, that's when we're really rolling. So we really need people that, we need to be thoughtful and, and not have rose-colored combs glasses above the possible. Because what I don't want to have happen, and this is part of the conversation we had this cycle, about making sure that we have, that what you put forward is based on the most, us doing the hard chewing in advance, because I don't want to go to the, to the city, what we're experiencing now in some ways, going to the city council with something that is more than what we really can expect from them. And then having them make some, make some reductions in the, in the bottom-line budget based on their own conceptualization of what we're proposing. That then puts us on, they're going to, they could hand that to us on June fifteenth and say, it's go time in fifteen days and you're now down four positions that you presented as a board to us, they're gone. And you just got to figure it out. And that's what I worry about on my side is that would, that would potentially put us in a spot where, that's when you, as an organization, you make some really lousy choices, because you don't have a lot of good options and you're in a panic. And so that's the type of stuff I, I always want to avoid.
Yes, Carrie?
That answered that and I, yes to encumbered budgets. That was like a mention you had in your reporting. I think that would be very helpful and more typical. If you wanted support for that.
Thank you. I mean, there will be, there will be voices somewhere that'll say, what are you doing? And it might be the individual who put that together, but first of all, but I, but I know, I know, yeah, I know who, I know who was given credit for that when I was, when I asked the question initially, but I, I, I think it'll help me provide more actionable and meaningful information to the boss and to you. And it will be more familiar to me, so, but it, but it'll be different, so. And it'll prove, it'll prove itself out quickly if we're doing well with the encumbrances or not. So I think the other thing that I should just tell you is that the, the message has continued to come that this is, the council is looking for sharper pencils, they're looking for some additional reductions. It's not, this isn't, what do I want to say? I've experienced this all of the years that I've been here so far, which is not a lot, right? But boards and councils are not very different, the council isn't even a more conservative council that I had the first couple of years when I joined you. They didn't want to come to the meeting and say, I'm cutting that, I'm cutting that, I'm cutting that. It might be, you know, there might be an individual that does, but what they like to say is, really, you could sharpen the pencil on that, really, you could just, you just get a little, you know, and then, so the conversation is going on City Hall today, the staff are saying, so, what are we going to, you know, what are we giving up? What can we give up that has the least impact on the, on the public, which doesn't really cannibalize services that people are going to miss or, you know, really want? Are there things that can be delayed or the things that, they talked a little bit last night about delayed hiring? To the extent that we all keep saying it's going to take us months to find a person to fill that role, then let's not budget for six months because we're not going to have them anyway. Start looking now and we'll pay for the second six months, that's less budget impact. It means it's a bigger hit in the subsequent year, because then you have to budget for the full person, not just half, but it could help in this budget cycle. So that's a continuing to percolate kind of conversation with the city process.
I want to make sure, because some people will, will have an opportunity to watch what we, what we were talking about last night, but I want to make sure we don't, in the process trying to inform you, don't carry a surprise that we were beat up any more than anybody else.
No, not a bit.
We were not, and it wasn't like all the schools have to carry the load, not at all. And I thought, I thought that, and we weren't pushed, we were not, I don't, I don't think they were rough on us.
No, great question.
I think they had good questions, I thought they were thoughtful questions. I don't think there were questions that were set up questions to try to get us to cut things. And in a lot of cases, I mean, one of the, like we said, one of the questions we responded to was a council person who was interested in, could we pay for all kids' school lunch? We want to do that type of thing. So I mean, so, so I just don't want to, I don't want you to leave with the wrong impression that we got beat up and was unfairly done, not at all.
Okay, shall we move on? Thank you, Zach, thank you, Nathan. Okay, we're on to consideration and approval of employment. Okay, thank you, Marco. I guess that goes to you, Zach.
All right, let's see, we'll catch back up. So two, two additional positions that, I'm sorry, not additional positions, this is replacement for one resignation at Dundero for a special ed position. And then, and then we had accepted another resignation from a teacher, Kelly Hurd, at Little Harbor. Jen Branch, who has worked as a, in a one-year role, temporary role in another position at Little Harbor, would be then assuming this is a full-time replacement for Kelly Hurd. And I'd love action from the board.
Motion to approve both?
Do we have a second, Ian? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Zach. Next, we have consideration and approval authorizing the superintendent to hire professional staff during the summer. So the sample motion is to approve authorizing the superintendent to hire professional staff during the summer.
Both approved.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Nathan, do you want to talk about the food service or do you think you talked?
Enough tonight?
Yes.
Oh, I felt that one, I mean, I was thinking that for the last ten minutes. I would like to steal, if I may, I'll try to, I'll try to be the five-minute person, except there's a lot of data on slides.
Let me mark this one down, Nathan.
All I want to do, all I want to do is,
Mark that.
Set it.
I want to queue up next month. So I want to take a couple of quick minutes, remind you about the school nutrition program. Explain to you something about the program structure and review pricing data. So I can set the table for a more formal presentation that I hope we can squeeze into next month's June board meeting. Even though Deb Rizzo, our food service director, it's the last thing on earth she wants to do is come and publicly speak, so this will be a real press. And I'd like your vote on a pricing increase at that June meeting. So let me just, again, walk you through as we all stare at this slide. I, I don't mean to read it to you, but the school, national school lunch program and school breakfast program are both USDA, Department of Agricultural Programs. We account for this as a special revenue, so you don't really see it, we don't do a lot of detail on this. It's essentially self-funded through local sales to families, through USDA federal reimbursements for the free and reduced lunch. And then they have a small amount of vending, machine income and some catering when they do lunches or whatever in the district generally. Our free and reduced lunch number is landing right now at fourteen percent, which if you compare to the rest of our region, for instance, SAU fifty, I think Greenland is at two percent in rye and, no, rye's at two and a half. Greenland might be at three, Newcastle's at zero, because they don't have a food source program, they don't do applications. Newington is in that two percent range. So at fourteen, I think it's fairly representative that we're not in the thirty to fifty percent range of some of the other cities of the state, but we have the presence of socio-economically disadvantaged folks in our community. The program is serving all of our schools as well as the Lister Academy building, although the satelliting of service to Lister is, it definitely, it,
Something we can improve.
It's something we can improve. So I just give you a little bit of background and we can, obviously we'll include more next time. The program's about a million dollars. It's grossed up to about million one, but the program actually runs closer to seven fifty, eight hundred thousand a year. And I say grossed up, meaning on the off chance that it ran to a million dollars, we've got to have that much in the special revenue side of the city. But our salaries are pretty real, they're about a half a million dollars and benefits on that, eighty-six thousand. That's primarily taxes because most of the staff there are three and four-hour people, there's not a lot of benefits being handed out. There's not a lot of New Hampshire retirement participation because they're, they're small, small-hour folks. Food cost is over four hundred thousand. And between the food and people, we've got ninety-three percent of the program wrapped up. But I said before, the local sales, federal reimbursements and incomes, they break down about two to one, local over federal. This last cycle was hard to, I mean, it just tweaks everything because it was a hundred percent federal. Everybody was free for a year and we pulled in a million two in revenues because we sold more meals. And I'll tell you more about the rates in a second, the rates were a lot higher than we ever get from local sales because it was subsidized and federally described or federally motivated. One interesting nuance to toss out there is that the general fund covers fund deficits. So if the program loses and doesn't have any savings on which to draw, ultimately it can't stay in the deficit, the general fund has to settle it up. We have a, this year, I think I reduced the number to fifty thousand dollars in next year's proposed budget. So I have fifty thousand dollars that's in your, in a contingency account under, not school board, but under the SAU cost center one seventy. There's a contingency there to help cover that, but I will tell you in the first two years, that number was budgeted at sixty and we spent a hundred and seventy-eight thousand one year and two hundred and seventy the next year. So it's been a struggle for this to be a self-sufficient program. My sense of the culture is it was never an issue. So long as we can cover it, we want to make sure we're doing it and doing it well. And by the way, any bad debts, they can't collect because so-and-so didn't pay their bill, that can't fall on the federally subsidized program either, we have to pay that out of local funds. So really the action item that I need for next month is that we need to raise the prices. We need to raise the prices by law. And, and how much we raise them, I wanted to have a dialogue with you about. If I can, I'm going to stand up and I'm going to point breakfast here and lunch there, but the layouts are the same. the layouts are the same. This is what we're currently paying, what families are paying. This is a local average calculated from Exeter to Dover, Rochester, we're gonna cut it to the Hamptons, Newmarket and Rominsford and Northwood and it's, you know, the net that went fairly wide. I think if I showed you the detail, which I'm happy to, Exeter and Hampton are a little higher like we are, the others bring that average down, otherwise I think you'd see those averages a little bit higher. But across the board, the regions paying more on average than we are this year. State law, I say law, federal law, USDA system will demand that we increase by at least a dime at closing the gap between what we're charging locally and what Uncle Sam is reimbursing. Uncle Sam, for breakfast, is reimbursing $211 on a free meal for breakfast. Actually, this year, there's Keep Kids Fed, Keep Kids Fed Act, tossed in an extra 15 cents on the breakfast, an extra 40 cents on the, on the lunch. So right now, this year, we're actually getting a little bit more. But so we're charging 150, 175, and the federal is 226 this year, it's 211. Lunches are a better place to talk because that's where the bigger money is. So the federal reimbursement rate right now is 441, which is temporarily kicked up from 401, but we're charging 360 at the high school, 285 at the elementary. So we would have to move at least a dime for next year, that's what the federal rules say. I'm gonna propose to you, we move it at least 15 cents. So from 285, 335 and 360, we go to 3350 and 375. That increase, that increase, you can do the math right now, take, take 15 cents times 180 meals for a year is $7.
We're just waiting for you to do the math.
Do the math in my head.
Oh, she's already in my head.
So it adds up to about 18 grand for the year. So when I talk about the fact that we're 100,000 in the hole or we're losing, we're not solving that problem. We're not trying to fully fund the program by the rate increase, we're just trying to comply. And also, when you make a change, which we don't make change anymore, it used to be like, oh, you gotta work, you gotta work to the quarter because you gotta make change in the drawer. That's not happening very much in the, in the registers these days, but they are nice round numbers. But I also want to put out there the conversation of trying to chase up against what the averages look like and where they'll be next year. 40 cents would take us to 325, 375 and $4. If the question was going to be asked of me, will that cover the costs? I could do a, I could do a deeper dive and come back to you with some sense of what the actual costs are, but the reality is, if in the aggregate, the program loses $150,000, this will raise 18, 20, this actually, 15 cents, this will raise, yeah, this was 40-something thousand, I think that it raises. It's, it's not gonna solve that problem either. One of the things that I want us to talk about is the rates, these 40 cent and 15 cent extras are gonna go away, although the rates underlying for reimbursement will kick up. Tell you one more thing. We get a subsidy right now of 85 cents, it will be 45 cents otherwise, for every meal, even a paid meal. So when I talk about a, a high school, we're paying 360, we're actually getting 45 cents from Uncle, so that's, we're getting 405 on that meal at 360. So not all is lost, right? This is paid and then for a free meal, somebody gets a free, the legislation that we were talking about is a statewide thing. I don't think that this would be the rate that I think the state was gonna honor, but the money wouldn't be coming from USDA. This was local and still don't know how we would delineate between those locally approved and those federally approved, but that's, I just didn't read that in the law. But so I, I would like to talk next time about landing here or potentially landing anywhere between here and there if you, depending on how you judge your own community, and I'm still new enough here, 14% on free and reduced, those folks should not be paying for the meal. Those who are not in that 14% category, if you take what the cost of 15 cents or 40 cents or 25 cents a day times 180 days, if you take what that is for your families to contemplate as new cost every, every school year to, to do the lunch, you tell me if that's, you tell me where you'd like that to land. The reality is, it's, it's supposed to fund itself, but your general fund kicks every year because it, this year you won't have to because they finished with a whole lot of leftover federal money last year, so they'll cover their loss this year and they'll cover it maybe all, some are all of next year's loss as well. But we do have to right-size because the state, the federal government, USDA, contemplates a rising scale of inflation. This year, the rates are moving 2% plus 7.4 for CPI, for the Consumer Price Index growth. So the rates that Uncle Sam thinks are important are growing measurably and we have to keep pace.
It is basically, I mean, right, I mean, that's because Uncle Sam doesn't want us to subsidize our paid meals.
Right.
Off of the federal program for the.
For the free meals.
So the idea is that we're keeping pace with what the feds are providing us for the rest of the program.
I should have said 10 minutes.
Yep. Like that, it was informative.
But that's, so I'd like her to come back next time and I'd like her to, I'd like Deb to come back, I'll come with her, I'd like her to do a slideshow, I'd like her to talk to her about what we are doing. I want her to answer questions like, how come there's no salad bar? And the answer's gonna be, I don't have staff to get out there and manage the salad bar and keep it fresh. How come we're not using the pizza oven that we've got at the high school? Because I need staff. We raised the rates because we collectively bargained with the workers, we made big jumps, we jumped them up so the base level is 15 bucks an hour and then they get more for your experience and they get more for certification to at least be competitive with the fact that it's minimum wage north and south of us, right? So, so we went to that and it's helped, we're still not fully staffed, she can speak to that, she can speak to, I know that we've had a little pushback, a little, maybe a lot. There's been some dialogue that I've, that's been shared with me from the buildings and from some of the families, but the quality isn't what Portsmouth was experiencing historically. I know that we've had conversations about farm to school, I know that we were taking fish off the boat when I got here and there were, you know, there were things that were happening in 19 when I arrived that just did not seem to come around. And I, and I, some of that's about the fact that she can fill some of the jobs, but I don't think the skills pervasively across the staff are what they were. So some of the prep work and some of the scratch cooking and such, I don't know how honest I can get my food service director to be because she loves her staff and she wants to rally for them and so do I, but I want to, as I'm talking to you and the community by extension about raising the rates, I think it's fair, we talk about what you're getting and what it is and how it's working. And then if you guys have any feedback or any creative notions, I think it'll be important that we share them all with Deb when we're here.
As you think about that, was, you know, again, the, kind of the rolling, the annual deficit of the program ballpark, you said before, just for people to conceptualize.
It's north of 100,000. I think it, I mean, it, we had a really bad year, the year right before COVID, it was 276,000 or something like that, but I think it had been running 100 and a quarter to 150. And FYI, that's about the cost of the salary benefits of the director. And some districts don't fund the director out of the program, they fund it out of the general fund. Just say it's an administrator who works on behalf of the district, but if you didn't have a food service program, you wouldn't have a food service director, so it's hard to suggest that that's a general fund expense. But ours is covered under the union contract of the administrators and it's really well-paid. That's all public information, but it's, it's a cost, but all by itself, if you didn't have the director, it still wouldn't mean that we would guarantee every year that we'd be in the black, but it, anyway.
And it would also create a bunch of operational problems.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll talk about that more next time, correct?
And, Nancy, I have a quick clarifying question. As far as the reimbursement rates, those aren't necessarily reimbursement rates as much as that's the rate we're getting. So if we're charging, you know, 360 for a high school lunch, we are getting, for a free lunch, we're getting 401 despite the fact that we charged 360, or are we only getting 360?
So 360 is what we get from families paying for the lunch.
Yeah.
If, if.
That's what we are charging for a full lunch.
That's what we charge for a full lunch.
So, but, so, but I just want to clarify that the 401, we're getting 401. We're not getting the 360 because we charged 360 and we're getting reimbursed for what we charged for a meal.
No.
We're getting the full 401.
If an eligible student.
Or a free student.
If an eligible student is served a free meal.
Yeah.
We get 401 from Uncle Sam.
Okay. And then, so, and I also, just for.
Let me go back, because now, now that I'm actually looking at this data, it's kind of, it's kind of funny. The reality is at 360, if you, if a child pays for the meal at 360, Uncle Sam gives us 45 cents. So we actually get 405 for a paid meal all in, we only get 401 for the free meal.
So net for us in the paid meal is 315.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess for next time, when, when we have a further discussion about this, I guess I was wondering if, if the topic can come back about like vending machine and add-on items, because I know when I was in middle school and high school, it was like, I used to eat the big cookie and like a pizza, a pizza pizza from Papagino's or a bag of chips and that wasn't like the standard lunch rate, that was me taking my $5 bill or whatever, 20 bucks my mom gave me or something. And so I guess I wonder, you know, if there's a markup there or whatever, is there money that we can sort of bring in on those items or those kind of, you know, are kids getting in trouble because they're using their lunch allowance for stuff that they shouldn't be or whatever? If we could have a discussion to sort of bring those numbers in, that would be good.
Make sure that everybody knows and Deb can certainly speak to that. One of the things she'll talk to you about is the federally reimbursable meal, what it is. It's gotta be one of these, two of those, you have to take the milk, I don't want the milk. You have to take the milk, give it to your, or leave it on the counter.
Oh, the apple, the classic is like the apple.
Well, the apple.
Take the apple, it has to be on your tray when you walk by.
On your tray so I can federally claim the reimbursement.
Basket after.
And so, so that's why, I mean, we, we did, we packaged things up during COVID and what was in the package. I mean, then they talked about, remember that, we're talking at this table, people talked about the donor table, or maybe it wasn't at this table. They talked about kids don't want this, so they take what they get, they take, they take the entree out, which is what they want, and then they leave all the rest and they didn't want to throw it away, so then they set up a table where they could leave it. So if a kid wanted an extra apple, he could go grab the apple without having to dig in the garbage, right? Don't truck it, leave it up here, right? And so she'll talk to you about the federal and she can talk to you about snacks and à la cartes.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if, and I, I, not to have the discussion now, but if, if we're looking at numbers for this, I think it'd be interesting, or if we could get it, numbers for, are we getting, like, you know, if somebody's buying a bag of chips for a dollar but it only costs us 20 cents, are we getting, like, are we getting that from the vending machines, are we, are those sourced out and are we getting that from, you know, the snack stand or however? So those numbers would be beneficial in looking at a budget, I think, too.
So I guess part of, yeah, okay, right. All of the ideas and suggestions, I, I don't want to put the board in a position where I'm laying out 12 months of financials and asking you to take it home and figure out how to balance this budget. I, I think part of what we're struggling with is that we've, we've reached a point where this is a losing effort. I mean, you can, you can, you can make significant cuts in the service that you provide or you can measurably increase the rates or even subsidize it. And we're not alone. We're not alone, I think this is a reality they're facing. And in places where they're able to be more successful financially, largely it's because they have a high school where they sell a lot of à la carte snacks and treats and ice creams and burgers and fries and things that are not related to this USDA and they make big margins on that and, and as a result can subsidize back into the program and eat up the losses at the elementary level or at the middle school level where they're not selling all of that stuff.
So I, I would say that was a conversation, when I had left, we were dealing with, and it was open campus for upperclassmen. Now, I can't, we, I haven't looked at it closely enough here, but that open campus was something that, that upperclassmen loved, but as we, we, because we were a place where, you know, if we ran a $10,000 deficit in the food program, that was a big deal, that was huge. And so one of the things we were dealing with, with our vendor, because we had, we had a third party that was providing food services, was, it was like, well, here's, when you started allowing seniors and juniors under certain circumstances to go downtown to get a pizza or sandwiches or like whatever, here's what happened to our revenue stream and it's, it's all the, the cookies you're talking about and the Papagino slice and the whatever that would, could subsidize the rest of the meal. That, that money that fortified the rest of the program was gone because it's going downtown to, to, to other businesses. So that was.
And how often is it the wealthier kids who have the vehicle to go, who have the money to spend and so you're left with the lower income kids who.
So, so.
So do we need to get better pizza? I mean, you know, I think we'll talk about this next time.
I mean, I don't want Deb to take on the whole night, but anecdotally, Exeter always has a very financially successful program because Exeter High School is out in the middle of nowhere.
No place to go.
You don't have time, you know, a few of them can really beat feet if they're the first ones out of the lot and get into Epping to the strip and they can hit one of the fast food places, but the majority of 2, you know, 15, 16, 1800 kids stay right there and eat lunch and oh, by the way, so do the staff. So all that à la carte stuff makes them money that helps keep their, their program afloat. It's harder here because we have so many, you know, accessible options, so.
Okay, we will discuss that at the next meeting. Thank you, Nathan. Now we're moving on to committee updates and Lisa's gonna talk about the Ad hoc Legislative Committee.
I was gonna ask a food question.
Oh.
I'm gonna do it anyway.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is a quick one, but I do think it would be helpful once we settle on what it's gonna cost, just to make sure that we can communicate that pricing out to people like as part of the back-to-school.
Yep.
Information. I want to maybe just like a refresh on what's in the lunch, because we've definitely had a lot of questions, questions over the last few years during COVID about what happened to what was amazing meals in a lot of the buildings.
Yep.
You know, a lot of reasons that things have shifted that are totally beyond our control.
We definitely want to get the answer at your June meeting.
Totally.
I couldn't pull it together fast enough for tonight, although tonight would have been better. We want it to be out as a communication to families, of course, school ends, and then definitely as the back, as a part of the back-to-school, because it's something we want them to plan for.
We're very efficient at our high school, they like get Uber Eats.
Thank you guys very much.
Shut down. Okay. So Ad hoc Legislative Committee, I believe we're gonna have a longer conversation about the future of that committee because it is ad hoc. At a future meeting soon-ish, when we discuss a few other ad hoc committees, so I don't want to do that whole conversation twice. But I would give you the quick update that the committee does have a series of recommendations to make to the board about how we might, you know, reshape it a little bit to try to keep it going in a more efficient way next year and involve more board members in the process. And it's okay with everybody, I'd wait to do that whole update until we're actually gonna have that on the agenda. The one bill that we took a position on, I think, was re-referred to committee twice in the Senate, which I think at this point in the session effectively means it is not alive, practically speaking, at least until some future point next year. So we're 0 for 0 on our, on our first year. Our first year. But, I mean, we definitely held up our initial deal to not move too quickly or be in areas where we don't have consensus and I do think that that is valuable. And I did, I think the meeting from yesterday, those minutes were just posted, but they just went into the city website like yesterday, so they're not in the packet that they are public if anybody wants to see them. And those do lay out in some detail some of the recommendations that the committee is going to be discussing, so, and those will also be in a packet at whatever point we're gonna have that on the agenda. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to go into it in more detail now, I just don't want to waste the time.
Well, thank you, Lisa, for your hard work on that committee. Being the first year that we've ever had that committee, I think it's, you've done a stellar job. Thank you. Yes, Liz?
I, I guess, I have a, so I have a question that had arisen after last meeting about the SAU 50. Just wanna make sure I got that rest, the SAU right, uh, 50 rep. And I don't know when the appropriate time to ask, so I'm gonna just throw it out there. I guess, obviously there's not a rep here tonight. And I, I guess I'm curious, like, what the communication is with the SAU 50 rep? Because, um, obviously our packets are posted online, but, um, you know, I think it does, like, disrupt the flow sometimes if there's not like an understanding of where we're at or where we've been. And there's different reps coming at different, you know, and I think it's nice to, if they have somebody, you know, who's gonna volunteer, great. But like, I'm a little bit concerned with the disconnect, so I don't know if there could be like a report back on it or something about, or, you know, like, what is the current, like, like, when Paula emails us the packet, does somebody there get it? And they need to disseminate? Like, I guess I'm just a little bit, I, I, it'd be nice to have a little bit of clarity around that or, or maybe potentially like, you know, um, direct, like if we could provide some sort of direction or policy or I don't know what the mechanism would be to, to sort of clarify that position a little bit.
Yeah, we can talk to you about process. I, and I think, and I don't know for members who have been on the board for a long time, to what extent our experience this year is representative or not representative of what, you know, our turnout looks like from SAU 50. My, my impression is that if, if there's an item that's hot, we'll get somebody at the next meeting. Uh, and I think they're, you know, and I think, I know Steve's trying to work with, um, their folks about that, about having a, a more natural kind of rotation of folks and sometimes just round availability. But I'll, um, I'll get the details on how that gets disseminated on their end and what their process is about sending somebody.
I know we definitely, they're informed of when our meetings are, they're informed of our agenda. Um, it's up to them to, to have someone. Two years, we had a woman from SAU 50, what was her name? Anne Mayer. Mayer. She came to every single meeting for years. She was the chair for Greenland. She never missed a meeting. That went on for years. But when she left, it's been challenging to fill that spot. But I know it's, they know about it. They know when the meetings are, they know what the agendas are.